Hunting Board for February 23, 2012 will now come to order. Anyone wishing to address the board this evening will need to fill out a green sheet at the front of the paper and be up to this asking for the record. Mr. McGinnis will be our secretary tonight. Mr. McGinnis will be called at any occasion.
Mr. Hurt, absent. Ms. Remark?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis here. Mr. Bohan?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Washington, absent. Mr. Hoitzma?
Here.
Ms. Benjamin?
Here.
Mr. Fishback, absent. Ms. DeNeil?
Here.
Ms. LaSage?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. First will be approval of the minutes from January 27. Are there any changes, corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. New items.
No, we need to do an amended agenda, the date for the meeting for January 27th.
It says 27, yeah.
It should be the 26th.
That's why we have the little red one there. Okay, sorry. So, a motion to approve the January 26, 2012 minutes, is that what we need?
We have to make a motion to amend the agenda for February 23 and exacting the date of the meeting.
Okay, all right. All right, then, a motion to approve the amended agenda dated 2/23/12.
Second.
Well, the amended agenda, if we do that date?
The red date.
The red date.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Then we need to have the 26 restated.
Okay. A motion to approve the January 26, 2012 minutes.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
New items. Ms. McGinnis?
Number four, preliminary plat, WC Grand DEV 2011-104. This is a quasi judicial hearing.
Yes, staff.
Thank you. Dennis Mrazek, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. This next item is a request to approve a preliminary plat for just a little bit less than one acre of land located at 516 South Grandview Avenue for the development of a 17-unit, single-family residential development. The site is located on 516 South Grandview between Goodall Avenue and Baradic Avenue. The site was rezoned to planned redevelopment in July of 2010. The purpose of the preliminary plat is to ensure that adequate infrastructure is installed and available for development to prevent hazards due to traffic, flooding, unsanitary conditions, or other causes permit development in an orderly physical pattern and prevent undue burdens or costs to the public. This is again for a preliminary plat approval. The final plat approval is still required and will require city commission approval only. There have been no requested waivers for this application. I just wanted to put the actual plat up there for you to get your orientation. You find Grandview is over there on the right of the page or the east side. And as far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat request. The item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city commission on April 4, 2012, and a majority vote of the members present and voting is required for action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any of the board members have questions? It's staff. Could we hear it from the applicant?
Good afternoon. Parker Minchenberg, 1729 Ridgewood Avenue. The engineer's landscape architect for the project. Dennis kind of told you what we're up to. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience like to speak for the project? Anyone opposed? Let's close the hearing. It's open to the board, ready for your discussion.
Motion to approve preliminary plat, WC Grand DEV 2011-104.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes eight zero.
On these next items, five and six, staff has requested that we carry them as A and B together. We will vote on them separately, but because they involve the same thing, we'll hear both items at the same time. Mr. Missouri?
Item number five, rezoning Fraternal Order of Eagles DEV 2011-105, quasi judicial hearing. Should I call six at the same time?
I believe so.
Number six, special use permit, Fraternal Order of Eagles DEV 2011-106, quasi judicial hearing.
Thank you again. Dennis Mrazek, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. The first request, this is item number five, is a request for the rezoning. It's a request by James Morris Esquire on behalf of Jerry McElfrish of the Fraternal Order of Eagles, RE 4401, Inc., to approve an application to rezone the subject property from R3 multifamily to RP residential professional for 1.15 plus or minus acres of land located on the north side of Bevel Road. I'll give you an idea of the location that we're looking at. This is on the north side of Bevel Road. It's at the southern limits of Daytona Beach, approximately 300 feet west of Ridgewood Avenue. It's located right there. Just to the north of it, it's a good shot over here, just to the north of it, we have the multifamily condominium units. We have multifamily apartments to the north of that. Over here on this piece of property, right up front, is a single-family use, I believe, which is debatable at this point, but I believe it's for single-family use. The, let's see, the current land use of the site is level three residential and retail. And the current zoning of the site is R3 multifamily. I did want to point out a correction from the staff report. As you notice, the single-family property that's located at the southwest portion of the subject property has split zoning on it. It does have the R3 zoning and the R1A, I believe, R1A zoning also, so it does have split zoning on it. The proposed zoning for the subject property is RP residential professional. Taking a look at the rezoning from the R3 multifamily residential. The RP that the applicant is requesting to rezone to shares all of the same uses that the R3 uses share with the exception of a couple of different uses. Additional uses allowed in the RP zoning district that are not allowed in the R3 zoning district include business services, and this does include office uses not involving the sale of goods such as real estate brokers, insurance, financial institutions, et cetera. Also, professional services are allowed in the RP zoning. These are professional offices such as law, architecture, medicine, dentistry, et cetera. Also, in the RP zoning, what is permitted, which is not permitted in the R3 zoning, are clubs and lodges as a special use permit. They're entitled to come in and to apply for a special use permit in the RP zoning for a club or a lodge, and that's what's going to be happening with the second portion of this, the second application that we're going to be hearing today. Some of the, we do have the details in the staff report of this, but some of the deviations of the development standards that you might find between the R3 and the RP. Multifamily minimum lot area in the R3 zoning district, the minimum lot area for a multifamily is just over 1,000 square feet. In the RP zoning district, it's just over 2,000 square feet, so you're required to have a larger lot area in the RP zoning for a multifamily use. The maximum building height for R3, there is no height limit listed for the maximum building height for the R3 zoning district. In the RP zoning district, there is a 35-foot maximum height. And as far as maximum density allowed in the R3 zoning district, 40 dwelling units per gross acre are permitted. And in the RP zoning district, we're looking at 20 dwelling units per acre, 50% reduction of the allowable dwelling units per acre. Based on that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning for the 1.15 acres of land from multifamily R3 to residential professional RP. The item is tentatively scheduled, be heard by the city commission for first reading on April 4, 2012, and second reading on April 18, 2012, which will be a public hearing. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board shall be required to recommend approval to the city commission. That is the portion of the rezoning to the RP. One of the reasons that's important is without the rezoning to the RP, the opportunity to apply for the special use permit for the clubs and lodges wouldn't be possible. So, I'm going to go right into item six, which is going to be the special use permit. And again, it is a request by James Morris on behalf of Jerry McElfrish to approve a resolution for a special use permit for 1.15 acres of land located on the north side of Bevel to allow for the Fraternal Order of Eagles Club Lodge as a permitted special use in the proposed RP zoning district. And again, pending approval of the RP zoning. I just went over these, but I'll go over them again. The location, again, on Bevel, just west of Ridgewood. The land use, again, is level three residential and retail. The zoning is R3 and the proposed zoning is the, excuse me, yeah, the proposed zoning is RP. I've got a picture of the site as it currently exists. This is taken from Bevel. You can see the A-frame house to the left, and then the property opens up to the right. I've got a, I believe, a close-up of the A-frame house as it exists. And then we have the property that's on a corner over on Ridgewood and Bevel, which is a vacant site. I believe it had a gas station at one point down there and perhaps a food store, since been demolished and awaiting redevelopment for the site. Special use criteria. When we review a special use permit application, the Land Development Code does list several criteria that we look at for our approval. Some of them I've listed over here in the presentation. I do have them all listed in the staff report. We look for consistency with the comprehensive plan, which we found it to be, that it's not detrimental to adjacent properties or neighborhoods. I believe with conditions, it does meet this requirement. That parking and access is addressed. Parking on-site has been addressed and access to the property has also been addressed. Design minimizes adverse effects on the use of adjacent properties. We believe that they have done that. Adequate provisions made for buffers and landscaping necessitated by the use, and the use meets lot and building requirements, which it does. Put up a picture of the site plan, just to get your orientation. Again, Bevel Road is to the south. Got a couple arrows up there. That is the single ingress egress point for the site. The single-family house, I've got it up there. It's flashing. That's where it's located, right over there. It's a smaller property, just to the southwest of the subject property. The, excuse me, the proposed building, approximately 6,500 square feet, is located toward the front, closer to Bevel Road. Put up a landscape plan for you. They do meet all of their requirements for their landscaping. The elevations, I've provided the elevations for you. The top one is the front elevation or south, that would be facing Bevel Road. Then the left is what would be facing the golf course area, the single-family home. Up on top, we have the rear elevation, which would be facing the multifamily to the rear, and then the right or the east elevation, which would be facing the undeveloped property facing toward Ridgewood. I will say that the applicant has modified the original elevations that were submitted to bring it into compliance with the design standards for the Land Development Code.
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The fence line that we see that's facing Ridgewood there, okay, how high is that fence and what is it made of?
That's a six-foot fence, and it's proposed to be made of a white plastic.
A white plastic, okay. And how long is that? Is that run the length of the building or the length of the property on that side?
It'll, the length of the property, all the way to the back. It'll match up with another fence that'll run to the rear of the property and then down the golf course. Now, conditions of approval. With a special use permit, additional conditions of approval can be added on based on the type of use in the particular area. Staff has come up with five conditions of approval for this particular project. The first one being limiting the hours of operation for the lodge use. Staff is proposing 8:00 AM in the morning to 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and then 8:00 AM to midnight, Friday and Saturday. The second condition of approval, prior to a final site plan approval, a notarized document will be required from the property owner of the single-family residence acknowledging the reluctance to have a fence installed. I'll tell you exactly what that means. The, I've got a picture up over here. You see the, the yellow is the single-family house. The red line is the property line for the subject property. The code would require them to put the fence right there on that property line. Unfortunately, the single-family house is approximately three feet from that property line. The owner of the single-family house didn't want to have that restriction between his house and the fence, and he's asked the Eagles if they could move that fence back to, at least give him the illusion like he had a little bit more space back there and a little less confined area. So, they agreed to do that. Fence is going to be pushed back on the other side of the retention area. What we would like for that condition is we would like something from the homeowner that says that, yes, that is what they agreed to, and they're okay with that. Also, in keeping with that, one of the other things that we would like as a condition is also prior to the final site plan approval, notarized document that would be required acknowledging that the owner of the single-family home adjacent to the subject property may request and be granted the installation of a fence by the owner of the Eagles Lodge at any time. That means whether this property owner or maybe the next property owner comes in there and says, "We want that fence back where it's supposed to be," they would be required to do that. They have to come back, and the Eagles would be responsible for moving that fence back, and then the Eagles would be done. They wouldn't have to move that fence anymore at that point, if that were to happen.
Is the fence required anywhere else around the property?
Yeah, fencing is required along the backside of the property, adjacent to the multifamily as part of the buffer requirement.
Okay.
And I believe it is required for the single-family also to buffer it from the single-family.
So, is it required facing Ridgewood or the golf course?
It's required adjacent to the single family.
Family that's...
It's a unique, it's a unique position that we're in with that, with that single-family house.
So, the fence is the other side of the retention pond that's...
Closer, further away from Bevel. Further away from Bevel.
Does that leave the retention pond unfenced then, unprotected or what?
It's...
From the house?
Well, from the house. The house...
That might come through. Well, it couldn't.
Well, whether the fence were, if you're worried about maybe water seepage from the retention area to the single-family, is that what the concern is?
No. Somebody walking by and decide they want to go there who's responsible if there's an accident or something.
Another water hazard for the golf course.
Yeah, but it's not on the golf course pond. That's...
It's not far from it.
And that might be something to consider with the affidavit that, you know, perhaps maybe freeing the Eagles up from any liability that might happen with the retention pond that wouldn't be fenced in from the single-family. Back up one more here. Condition number three, prior to final site plan approval, a notarized and recorded cross-access agreement will be required providing for future possible vehicle cross-access to the property immediately to the east. Tell you exactly what it is that we mean by that. Here again is the property, Bevel Road to the bottom there. This is the area that we're looking at. It's in the back, and this would be adjacent to the undeveloped property to the east. As a good planning tool, here's a closer-up version for us, a good planning tool, we would like to see a cross-access agreement in place, so in the future, if the site next to it ever got developed, we'd be able to easily connect those two pieces of property to be able to allow access with vehicles from the one property to the other property. This would keep vehicles off of Bevel that would be going from one site to the other site, and just make it a little bit more easier for connection between the two properties.
I'm sorry, can we go back?
Sure.
So, would that mean, like, for instance, would that only include the vacant property or could that also include that?
It would only include their property, and they can't address property that...
But I mean, that's what we're looking at, right? A cross-access...
But leaving access there, is that what you're talking about?
Well, we would get that access to that property line.
It would be like an easement until it's actually needed or just it's...
It would be reported on their property.
Oh, okay.
The next property will be addressed when that comes in.
Okay.
And then we connect up into it and we have that opportunity.
Okay. And so, that would mean, like, for instance, if it's a bank on the corner, I, and I'm a member of the Eagles or whatever, I could get back and forth without having to go out onto the street?
That's exactly what it would mean.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Finally, the condition number five. This is a modification to the proposed site plan to provide for future access to the unimproved right-of-way known as Virginia Avenue, which is located at the northeast portion of the subject property. I've got a map over here. Again, this is, you see in red, that's the entire property, the subject property. The condos to the north, and let's see, there's the Virginia, unimproved Virginia at that point. It ends right at the, right at the subject property. One of the conditions of approval, if that, the unimproved right-of-way were to ever be improved, we would like to have the opportunity to be able to have this property connect up into Virginia. The best way to be able to do that is to plan for that now. If the site plan were modified to anticipate one day that connection being done, this particular property would be able to access Virginia at that point. A little proactive planning for something that might happen later on in the future.
Would that access go all the way through to Bevel?
No.
It's just this property to be able to access Virginia and get out another way?
Correct.
Thank you.
Not through to Bevel, just to Virginia. And as for a recommendation of approval, staff does recommend approval of the special use permit to construct a Fraternal Order of the Eagles Lodge on 1.15 acres of property located on the north side of Bevel Road and the southern boundary of the city with the stated conditions. A majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required for recommendation of approval to the city commission. That concludes my presentation.
Are there any other questions from the board of the staff?
Yes.
Yes.
Did we settle whether or not the subject property is dual-zoned?
The, you know, if I back up a little bit, there's a question on, if you can put the back up there, sure. There's a question on the actual subject property because there's a small portion to the east. If you take a look, and I can't really get a good zoom in there, but if you take a look, it would appear that there's a sliver of property that may be to the east that might be zoned R1A. Taking a look at that, and we've had our GIS planner take a look at that, and it's a gray area if it is or if it isn't, you know, where exactly that line is. If you look at it compared to where the land use line is, the land use line is clearly outside of that, outside of that border, but this particular line is just inside. Not knowing if that was inadvertent, maybe a mislining there of the zoning, but from what we've been able to tell, it's showing up as just the R3 zoning.
I just noticed that on the zoning, I just thought it'd be interesting.
We did, we did take a look at that, and there, you know, there's a little, sometimes old, you know, slivers that move back and forth on some of these lines. Computers aren't exactly perfectly accurate, but we try to get the best we can.
Since this is a special use permit, what, how are taxes handled by clubs and lodges and this sort of thing?
Well, that's a good question. This particular type of use, I did call the tax appraiser, the county's tax appraiser, and this type of use tends to be a nonprofit and tends to be exempt from property taxes. So, at this point, they have not filed for a property exemption for this particular site, but after speaking with them, if they are a nonprofit, and I would suspect that they are, they would most likely be entitled to a property exemption for this particular property.
Is anything done in conjunction that with places or...
Well, you know, there are opportunities for maybe...
Since it's a special use permit as well.
It is, yeah, it is a special use permit, and as far as being exempt from the property taxes, there are opportunities through different types of programs. One is called a pilot program, which is a payment in lieu of tax, where the applicant would be submitting a payment that would help offset the cost of the services used, police, fire, whatever types of services, in place of the tax that they would be paying. I'm not, I don't know if it would be the entire tax, it would be a portion of the tax, maybe it would just be the portion of the city tax that would be going into this payment plan, but it would be an option for additional payments for that site. And as a special use as a condition of approval, you know, it is possible that it could be included as a condition of approval, and I'm sure the applicant would...
Yeah, the applicant would have to agree to that condition.
There's an outdoor screened area, screen porch area that I saw. Was there any discussion about outdoor music, either live or amplified? Because that looks like that faces...
Thank you for bringing that up. No, we didn't have any conversations on outdoor music or outdoor amplified music outside. And there is a, you did point out, and I probably should have pointed that out over here on their, on their site plan, but I'm going way too far back. Let's get here to your site plan. Okay, in this area right here, this corner, is a screened room with, I don't know, probably seats approximately 20 people, which would be open up to the outside, so any noise coming from that room could be, you know, leaving the...
And how wide is their ingress and egress, and how close is that then to the single-family home? Because that's...
How far is this from this?
Well, no, like, what's the ingress and, no, you have the little A-frame home right up there to the left. So, how wide is that driveway? Because it's right on their property line, correct?
Yeah. Well, here's, here's the property line right here.
Right. So, how wide is their driveway? But you go in, how wide is that between their building?
This would be at least 24 feet here. This is typically 24 feet, and then approximately 19 feet for each parking stall on each side.
Okay, so, within, what, about 50 feet, 60 feet, something like that?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And one other thing, if, let me go back to that little sliver of land. If that little sliver were not there on the east side, they would not have to have that fence, correct? I mean, I'm just thinking of a six-foot tall, long...
Single-family...
That little sliver that you're talking about that's on the east side that may be R1A, wasn't that on the east side of that?
You're talking about this right over here.
It's on the west side.
Oh.
That's the west side.
So, they don't, they actually don't need that fence, that long, tall, white fence facing Ridgewood?
On the east.
On the east side.
They wouldn't need it for architectural guidelines because that side is not...
Oh, I have thoughts on that.
That's not...
Yeah, I, but they, they wouldn't actually have to have it if there was better design on that side.
It would not be required by program.
Yeah, that fence is not a requirement.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and one other thing, I'm sorry, did you have, is there any conversation about what happens to the traffic on Bevel and Ridgewood and people trying to turn around and the train tracks and people coming east and people going west?
There's no traffic study that I've seen.
There's nothing here?
Thank you, we, we did request a traffic impact analysis from the applicant. It's their responsibility to make a determination of whether the traffic impact analysis would be required, and I believe they're in the process of going through that. Before we get to a final site plan approval, they're going to have to demonstrate that it does meet all of the requirements. They're going to have to also acquire the F-dot permits for any type of connection that they may need. So the, before we get to that point, we're going to have to verify and make sure that the traffic is going to flow the way it needs to flow before they get to a final site plan approval on this.
Where is the retention pond?
It's behind the single-family property.
Now, you said you're going to put the fence on the other side of it, meaning on the north side?
Yeah, here, I'll, I'll show you. There you go, that's where the fence is going to be going, and it's, and it actually wraps around. Can you change it? Well, I'm being, well, I'll let them answer that question then. This was the information that we had, that the fence was going to be moved to this location, from this location.
Yeah, I guess one of my questions was, you don't have to have a fence around a retention pond?
No, no, but you do have to have the fence budding the single-family. This particular type of use is a requirement for compatibility of uses.
But you don't have to put one around a retention pond.
No, no. It's not required to go around the retention pond. Fencing was just for the single-family compatibility.
Okay. Any more questions? May we hear from the applicant?
Thank you.
Chairman, Board Members, good evening. I'm Jim Morris. I was sorry to interrupt Mr. Morozic, but I didn't want to keep repeating something that isn't accurate, so I'm sorry about that, Dennis. I'm here on behalf of the Eagles, and I want to run through the conditions and so on that are addressed here. This is a piece of property that you all probably know has been vacant for a long time. It's also property that my clients have been in conversation with, the neighbors that are in the A-frame home, a pair of ladies that live there, as well as they've been in contact with the condominiums, which are north of this property on Virginia. And Virginia used to connect to Bevel Road, but it was vacated by the city commission sometime back, so that's why it terminates as it does. And I know that the folks in the condominiums that are north are aware of the request, they're here tonight. The neighbors in the A-frame house are aware of the request. I don't know whether they are here or not, but they have in fact asked not to have a fence.
They're here.
There they are. They'll speak for themselves. From the standpoint of, and we're glad to have them here, from the standpoint of the retention depression, it's not a pond. It's dry. And the slope of the sides is such that fencing is not required. So that when you, when you see retention ponds that are fenced, for instance DOT ponds, usually they have vertical sides, so that someone or some fell in or drove in, there's no way to crawl back out. It's a wall, basically, once you're in the hole. So there's a slope requirement that's dictated by Florida law regarding whether or not you have to fence the pond. This pond is so shallow, in other words, the slope is so soft, that it's not required to be fenced. And the folks in the A-frame will tell you how they feel about the fence. My clients are perfectly agreeable to not have the fence. If the neighbors want the fence, we build the fence. That's the bottom line for that part of it. We want to do what the neighbors want to do. In regard to Virginia Avenue, the condominiums are there on the north side. Can I have that aerial back, please, Dennis, that shows the site? The aerial, please. And I've been in contact with their property manager, and they, the apartment complex does not want to have that road connected. One of the things that has happened in that area, according to what they told me, and again, the condominium representatives are here, is that there's been a problem with homeless people coming to and from through the different places. So they would much rather simply see the property, as I understand it, secured from edge to edge with a concrete block wall, and my clients are willing to do that. That's a change from what Dennis and the staff reviewed. But the reason that folks want a concrete wall is their opinion that it will be more reflective of noise from the road and from the building, from the standpoint of the building. The building isn't going to have significant noise or create problems, and it hasn't done that in their other clubs in Port Orange and in South Daytona and in Daytona Beach Shores. I've got a, a package here that I want to hand out to y'all, and I know you got a copy of the letter, some of you did at least electronically yesterday, when I read the staff comments. And I also have a letter that I'll distribute from the police chief in Daytona Beach Shores. There's a big Eagles club in Daytona Beach Shores. It's just south of, excuse me, Dunlaughton on A1A, and they occupy the old Sophie Kay's restaurant that's down there. And the police chief from the shores has written a letter to y'all that tells you they've had no problems whatsoever with the Eagles and that they're good corporate citizens. The standpoint of the Port Orange Club, I understand the police chief did write a letter, but he mailed it, didn't send me an electronic copy. I understand that what that letter says is that they have not had absolutely no problems, but whatever concerns they've had have been minor problems. And that club is a club that's been there for some time, and they just finished a new building. I'm going to have Jerry McElfresh from the Eagles stand up to tell you what their club is about, and then I want to come back and visit some of the other conditions, and there's a lot of Eagle members here tonight as well. So if you would, Jerry.
Before he, before he does, I'm sorry, could you just explain about the concrete block wall? Are you talking only on?
I'll come back to it.
Okay.
Mr. McElfresh.
Yeah, the Eagles is a nationwide.
Name something.
I'm Jerry McElfresh with Eagles Area East 4401. The Eagles is a, actually a worldwide club, and our main purpose is to do charitable work, is people helping people. Our particular club has been located in South Daytona for the last 10 years, and from June of last year to June of the year before, we gave out $29,000 in charitable stuff just to South Daytona, not counting, the National Eagles has done, give $15,000, $15 million to the Juvenile Diabetes Foundation, and also over $5 million to breast cancer research. So we're, we're big into helping all the organizations. We, this year for Christmas and Thanksgiving, we've fed 16 families from Campbell, Campbell Junior High School for Christmas and Thanksgiving dinners. We also had toys for the kids. We try to help everything we can in our community. We donate to the fire department, we donate and supports police department. I personally have been a member of Port Orange Eagles and this Eagles for the last 25 years, and I originally joined Eagles in 1964, and are a great organization. I have talked personally to the condo association and the people in the A-frame house, and we're willing to work with them any way we can, and they're, they're going to be great neighbors for us. Anything else?
I think it would be Mark wanting to know about the concrete wall on the north and perhaps on the east, because that's a question.
Well, on the north for sure.
Okay, the lady from the condo association called me today, and she asked if we could put a concrete wall with no fence, no gate separating the two properties. Like Jim said, they've had a lot of trouble with homeless people and everybody coming down through there, also through the A-frame lot going out to Bevel Road. I told her we would be in agreement to that, we would put up that six-foot wall without a problem.
Okay, and this would be a block wall that doesn't look like, would it be stuccoed? Would it be attractive, or would it just be concrete blocks?
It would probably be painted concrete block, but now if, if you require us to stucco it, we will. We'll, we'll work with you.
Okay.
So while I had a chance, I had letters passed around to you. You see the letter from the police chief in the shores, and my letter, which was written when I got a chance to read Dennis's staff report. So when I talked to Dennis about Virginia, what I had said to him was that we would be willing to have some sort of a knock-down gate or something like that. Because when you look at this request, the people that live in the apartments to the north presently don't have traffic, and did that aerial ever get up?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
That's, there it is. So when you see the apartments and their parking lot, the road isn't in their parking lot. The road is immediately to the right of their parking lot. So that if that road was ever improved, which number one, I think is unlikely, but secondarily, what would happen is the folks that live on that street that presently don't have traffic from US-1 because they are a dead end, would now have some traffic coming down in front of their properties, and it's not something that they want, even if it's only for this particular use. And I believe that what you will hear is, is that the folks that are to the north and the folks in the A-frame house aren't concerned about the hours of operation, and that the folks in the condominiums to the north don't want to have that direct access connection because of the impact that would have on the way that they live and the way that they occupy their properties. The fact that this property will be built on and have a screening wall is going to protect them from the noise of Bevel Road, and the Eagles, you know, if you had any issues, I think you'd see that from the shores. They're a pretty aggressive police agency, and this is right, I mean, it's on A1A, adjacent to homes immediately to the west in Daytona Beach Shores. So in relation to those two conditions, that's how we look at those two particular things. In relation to the cross-access easement, if you wouldn't mind putting up the site plan, Thank you. Okay, here, here is the concern with the cross-access easement, and I told this to Dennis yesterday. If you want to connect the corner property to this property, first and foremost, my clients would prefer not to do that. But secondarily, if that's going to occur, if that's a condition of this request, we ask that you not place it where the staff has proposed it, which is on the northern extreme. And I want you to envision this, US-1 in the afternoon, people on their way home, they're southbound, they want to turn right at Bevel, and it's stacked up. And so here's a driveway, it's convenient. You turn and you haul butt through those parking lots to get to that driveway, because otherwise you won't be ahead of the car that you were behind. And now you're a member of the Eagles, and by the way, there's a handicap parking place backing in or out about the time that somebody decides this is the best way home, and here they come. So in your parking lot, you're walking or driving, and you've got highway traffic coming through your property at a rate of speed higher than you would expect in a parking lot. So if internal connection between those two sites is that important, if we have to have it, what we want to do is not to have it at that point, but have it at the front driveway. Aesthetically, that isn't helpful to us, but from the standpoint of the turning movement someone would have to take, here's why, Tracy. Someone builds on that corner, they're going to build in a square. Imagine Walgreens, CVS, whatever you want. They're going to put parking around their building. They're not going to stick it to one side. They're going to have access all the way around it. But if you are the person southbound on US-1, instead of that right turn, straight shot, hang a left and then go as fast as you can, you have to make a turn in, you have to go across the front, you have to come again, and then you turn. It's not efficient. You will never be ahead of that car that's at the corner. So from a standpoint of traffic calming, for the cut-through traffic, it's not an inducement. From the standpoint of what the, a stated goal is, to have interconnection to the property so that those, there's shared access, it accomplishes your goal, but it doesn't endanger the people that are occupying this property and create what, as a matter of law, is a traffic violation. When you seek to avoid a traffic control device, you've actually violated the law as it relates to traffic control. So first, we'd like you not to require it, but if you're going to require it, don't require it on the west, sorry, on the north. Bring it down to the side, because there will be a driveway there for the property next door. That's the way it's been developed before. When you look at development patterns, that's what occurs. And you won't then create a traffic hazard for my clients. And I understand from talking to Dennis, and you all know too, that you can't require the corner property to do it until it develops. But from a connection standpoint, when you put it, or if you tried to make it go to the north, you are inviting a hazardous situation, and you haven't addressed anything from a public safety perspective, which is the object of the conditions. So with that, let me move to the one that was the question, which is the 501(c)(3), and the possible tax-free, your property tax-free status of this club. You're in the zoning process, and you're dealing with land use regulation, not financial questions or city finances. And I do not believe to try and require tax payments in lieu, payments in lieu of taxes is a legitimate or permitted purpose in the zoning process. And the typical place that you see tax payments, or payments in lieu of taxes, is ordinarily in municipal property that is customarily tax-free, and the tenant agrees to occupy the property that way. Now, I suppose you could say, well, then our option is to turn this all down. And I guess you could do that, but from a standpoint of the standards of the zoning and the conditional use, this property meets those requirements.
Special use.
I'm sorry, condition.
Special use.
It's a conditional, regardless. Either way, they're fish of the same school, as far as I'm concerned. They are required to look at conditions that, when you look at what the purpose is, is to somehow address the land use issues that relate to it. So I honestly think that you're not on your proper footing when you're trying to deal with a tax or finance question in a land use issue. And, and if that's the case, then there's many other places in the city that you need to look as well. This is a straightforward land use request. We've worked with the neighbors. I think you're going to find the neighbors are not in objection, and there's things that they like about the proposal. The property's been vacant for a long time, so to date, it's been basically an eyesore down there on the corner because there hasn't been any use. The folks here will certainly make an improvement to it, but let me go a little further in relation to the tax question. Even if these folks are tax-free, from a standpoint of their annual donations to all sorts of civic causes, the money that they spend and that they donate to do those things far exceeds what they spend in tax revenue. And if you knew them, you would know that, and I know the Eagles is not as well-known as the Moose Club or VFW or some of those others, but that's the situation. And as to the hours of operation, what we want to have done is to simply be governed by general law, just as other clubs that are in Daytona Beach or elsewhere would be. So that's our presentation.
I just wanted to clarify one statement I made. When I said they would have to agree to the condition, we can't actually make it a condition. They would just have to voluntarily want to make that payment, but it can't be something we put in our motion, so.
Thank you. So that really concludes my presentation. There are other people here that are interested, that want to give you their input, and I'll be glad to answer your questions now, or if you want me to come back, whatever suits the law.
Any questions while Mr. Morris is up here? Tracy?
Well, of course, I always do. Okay. Do the other clubs that you were talking about have outdoor areas, and are they adjacent to residences?
Yes and yes.
Okay, because Sophie Kay's is on the east side of A1A.
Sophie Kay's is on the west side of A1A.
Oh, I'm thinking of the top.
And it, but homes.
Okay.
Both sat north of it and west of it.
Okay. And are the, are these hours what they're open, the other hours?
Yes, they are.
To A1A.
And by the way, you didn't ask me about Port Orange, but the Port Orange Club, which is brand new.
Uh-huh.
They replaced a steel building down there with a, a stuccoed building that's on US-1. It also is adjacent to residences and fronts on US-1 in that case.
Okay, do the other ones allow outdoor music or amplified outdoor music?
We don't have any intention to have outdoor music or amplified music. These folks are good folks, but I think their rock and roll days are not with them anymore. They do have karaoke.
Shitterbug dance.
They do have karaoke, and you are invited if you'd like to come. Wednesday nights, Jerry?
That's.
Saturday, Saturday.
That's, that's not outdoors though, right?
No, it's inside.
Okay.
The Bad Singers are outside.
Okay.
But let me say this, from the standpoint of your concern about that condition, first of all, the spaces inside the porch are secured by glass doors because of air conditioning and that sort of thing, and.
Well, it's called a screen.
Totally enclosed?
Oh, because it's called a screen porch on our.
It will be enclosed.
All right, the, my clients tell me that room will be enclosed by glass doors and glass panels, because it's a smoking room, so it'll be climate controlled, but folks can go out there.
That makes a difference.
That's a big difference, thank you.
And if you want to reference that in the recommendations, we're, we're fine with that, just as we are with the wall and just as we are with finishing it. But what I'd like to do, if, if there aren't more questions, is let other folks talk, because there's people here that are interested, and I think we've got a consistent position with our neighbors, because we've worked with the neighbors, and I think you're going to find that when they come up to speak to you. Thank you.
Okay, the only ones I had was Mr. McElfresh. Is there any others? You'll need to fill out a green paper when you wish to speak, and I think we'd like to hear from homeowners.
Are they speaking?
They want to speak, but they didn't got the form, so they're afraid to talk.
Oh, no, it's okay. We don't bite.
This is my first time.
Not a problem.
Hi, I'm Bill Ferguson, and I am the president.
Oh, 1500 Virginia Avenue is my office, 1508 is my home.
Okay. And you're just north of the site, correct?
Just north of the site. And I was talking with Mr. McElfrashe, two times now we've had, and we all agreed, the board members and myself and the manager, on the concrete wall, or block wall, and we are looking forward to it, believe me, because we do have a lot of problems down there, where the home was setting up, there were tents and cardboard boxes and different things like that, that would eliminate a lot of stuff for us as well. The only thing that we did have a question on that was, really, the whole complex, was the Virginia Avenue deal, because it's been vacant for so long. I mean, the condos were built in '72, and it was vacant then. And we've been taking care of the upkeep of that ever since the place was built. We mow it, we trim the trees, we pay to have people come in and trim them. We keep the wall that's up there now behind the liquor store, we keep that painted, and we kind of keep the whole area nice up there. And if we have traffic coming through there, the only thing I'm afraid of, we park facing Virginia. That's where our parking lot is. If you have cars coming down through there, and somebody falls asleep, or something happens, our people are going to suffer. They're going to go right down into the parking lot, and cars are going to be wrecked and everything else. But I do realize that they are going to put their sewer line through there and touch with Trixie, which is fine.
Thank you.
Oh, the operating hour says is fine. We have no problem with that, because we've been told by Jerry and stuff that most of the noise is inside. The only thing you're going to hear is a car start up, but with the wall, that'll buffer that. So as far as that goes, we're fine with the plans that they have right now.
Is that the plans that was read on weekends till midnight, or what's allowed is 2:00 in the morning?
Well, the 2:00, from what I understand, isn't every day. It's, I guess you have special...
Monday, it's Monday through Saturday.
What I talked about with their property manager, and she had read the staff report, and we knew the assembly would be here, was to just be governed by general law and let general law apply.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, it's Monday through Saturday. It's actually, it's every night until 2:00.
Yeah, it's every night until 2:00.
And that is what the client submitted, and we've looked at that. We understand the staff condition, and what we're asking for you to do is ignore both the staff report and our application, and just let general law govern it, just like it governs everybody else, because there's no reason to treat it any differently.
We have another speaker, Mr. Donald LaFleche. State your name and address.
Donald LaFleche, what do you want, my address? 63 Oak in the woods, Daytona, Port Orange. I'm the president of Daytona Beach Eagles, 4401, I've been president about six times. What I want to refire, prefer on is the building's going to be a concrete building. It's not going to make any noise. We have karaoke aside in nice and gently, and we have music right now, till we get, you know, maybe during the week, we'll have other amusements, entertainment and all that. As far as that little screen room over there, that's going to be closed in if it gets cold. It could be used as a smoking room. Eventually, smoking will go be out. We'll probably stop it, but we're going to use that room for a smoking room right now. It will be enclosed. In the summertime, we get open up, when it's warm, and in the winter time, we'll be able to close it up. That's all I have to say. But like I said, I've been president six times over there, and I'm going to probably be president again next year. I'm not sure, but like I said, we don't make any noise or nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? The homeowners, would one of you like to speak?
Well, wasn't something happening about the fence in the home?
Good evening, I'm Mary Ann Jump, 350 Bevel Road, A-frame House. I don't want a fence right behind my house.
Good evening, I'm Mary Ann Jump, 350 Bevel Road, A-frame House. I don't want a fence right behind my house. I mean, it's trees there now, it's pretty when it's cut down, it's beautiful. I like the idea of the cement fence in the back further, dividing the property. I think that's a great idea. Cut down on the noise. As far as the music from them, whenever we have anything going on in the woods now, we ask them to turn the music up. Because I sit in my garage, and I did smoke, I stopped smoking now, I sit in my garage, and I couldn't hear the music. And that's with the garage open and them being right next door. So, I mean, you know.
They have to invite you over to dance, then.
Oh, they have, they have. I've tasted all their food. They've got good food, too.
Now...
That's even better.
They did indicate, I'm just, I know you don't want the fence on your property line, but what was indicated is it would be on the other side of the retention...
That's fine.
...area.
Yes.
Okay. Plastic or concrete? Do you want, because you, all you, because on the other side of that is all parking.
Right, on the...
So something that would buffer the sound more?
No, on the, where the property goes to the condos, that's where...
So you don't even want fencing on the other side of where the retention area is? The first fencing that you would be comfortable with is on the very far north side of the property?
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay, because we had it different. Thank you.
The fencing was for the protection of the homeowner.
They don't want any...
I don't want to see no fences there.
Yeah, anywhere, got it.
It's pretty back there when it's cut down and everything.
Okay, thank you. We have another speaker.
I'd like to add one thing as far as the hours of operation. Where we're at now, we are allowed to be open until 2:00 every day. Very rarely through the week are we there after 11:30. There's just not enough business, not generated, you know, we get down to two or three people, we close. On Saturday nights, sometimes, we're there as late as 1:00, 1:30, but we have no outside entertainment, and don't plan on having outside entertainment. Everything will be inside.
Okay. Mr. Neil McGinnis?
My name's Neil McGinnis, 3869 South Nova, Port Orange. I'm a project manager with Daniel Johns Engineering on this project. I just wanted to clarify, when we went into talks with the city staff regarding the fence around the A-frame, we increased the landscape buffering of that, and then offered up, specifically designed the project to put the retention pond there to keep all of our stuff, with the exception of the access to the property away from that. We're not proposing any fence on it, any place, because it would, I don't think it would benefit anybody to put the fence on the other side of the pond. It definitely wouldn't benefit our client, so I just wanted to clarify, there's no proposed fence right now around the A-frame. We are proposing to provide notarized documentations, you know, affirming this agreement.
Could you talk about the median opening to the traffic circulation?
As it stands now, the median on Bevel?
Yes, just the whole traffic circulation?
Actually, as it stands right now, we are, have received a, you know, verbal approval from the Department of Transportation regarding Bevel Road and how we're going to access this site, and what they're proposing that we do right now is put in no left-hand turn lane eastbound on Bevel, is what traffic is looking for from the client.
Would you restate that again, I'm sorry?
In regards to the ingress and egress on this site, what Department of Transportation is looking for from us right now is a no-left-hand turn sign heading eastbound on Bevel Road at this site. Site lines up with Jones Street across, so you'll still be able to come directly northbound through, through the intersection, through the median cut. You'll still be able to leave the site and head eastbound onto Bevel. The only thing you're going to be restricted from is making left-hand turns heading eastbound off of Bevel.
So you'd make a right and go up to the median cut and then come back?
So you're right across from it?
Well, from a standpoint of traffic coming to the corner location, it wouldn't be able to turn left and go to this, because you've got a no-left turn. If you're eastbound, you wouldn't turn left to go to the corner location, obviously.
Right, yeah, no.
But you can go straight across Bevel before you get to the railroad, you don't turn right to the railroad track? You're saying you can shoot straight across Bevel into that...
Or the street.
Well, Jones is an existing street, so there's no improvement. So Jones has the opportunity to make the left-hand...
On the other, in South Daytona?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you could come out, and you could either go right west, or you could go straight across Bevel...
You won't be able to go straight out of this site. This site's going to be...
You said it even, you lined up with Jones.
I'm saying traffic coming from Jones. We're going to be, no, you're correct, you're going to be able to come out of that site and make a left turn. The only thing, only restriction on that intersection right there is going to be no left-hand turns heading eastbound on Bevel Road. So you won't be able to turn left into this site. And that permit's coming for...
Your discussion with DOT, was there, they gave you that verbal without a traffic report, or traffic...
We did, and we looked, I mean, the existing use on this, this is multifamily right now.
It's a vacant piece of property.
Well, the traffic generation, potential traffic generation...
Did they give you that permission for curb cut and no median without a traffic setting?
Yeah, the traffic generation is 88 with this use, it would be over 150 with multifamily. And we've already, they have, the permits, the only thing that they're looking for right now is an ownership verification right now on the property, and we'll have our DOT permit, as well as...
You might want to provide that information to our traffic engineer or...
Oh, absolutely, and they want all of our, I mean, they want every single one of those permits, and that's with our next submittal. We're through two submittals already with the city staff.
So what you're saying is DOT says the traffic will be reduced by 50% as far as potential?
Yeah, DOT is okay with the site.
I don't, I travel that corner a lot, that's very hard to believe.
It's only as it relates to this site, not traffic in general.
Yeah, well, I think we have to consider traffic in general, what happens to.
Well...
That was a stacked-up corner today, just coming to this meeting.
So you know how accurate I am when I talk about the cut-through?
You're exactly right. I agree with that.
So, but the point is that the use that's there, if it was, and they could build that today with the site plan, projection-wise, would have twice the traffic of the proposed rezoning. So when you look at projected traffic, and you see a reduction in the projected traffic, from an impact perspective, it's considered to reduce the impact. Even though the property's presently vacant, that's how traffic analysis works. So no question, the road's busy. It's busy.
I understand what you're saying.
No, I agree with you completely. That's why we do not want that straight-line cut-through where people will be able, about four or five cars back from the corner, say, "You know what? I've got four people ahead of me, I'm going to cut in right here." It's going to happen that way.
And that would happen.
That straight-line cut-through would be totally dependent on city site plan review and design. You could design it as straight-through, which we would not agree with when that site comes in.
And could I just say one thing about a straight-line cut-through or whatever? There, I was just, I can't imagine a busier intersection right now than, say, Williamson and Taylor just past I-95, and there's a Citgo, professional offices, a Walgreens, and they absolutely do cross-access, but it's designed in such a way among the properties that it doesn't make any sense to cut through.
Which is all that I've asked you to do here, is not to require it, or allow it to be required on north boundary, let it be on the south boundary, then you know there's turning movements. Because I promise you, the building that goes on the corner will probably be square, the lot is square. It will be a straight line from a design perspective, so if you change the connection point, there has to be turning movement, which will slow traffic down. That's all that we're asking. We're not saying it's a bad concept, we just say where it is will endanger us, and there's a better way to do it.
Sure you're agreeing to...
The cross-access...
If it's just wanted on the southern side, not on the northern side.
No, Andrew, you're correct, as far as it being cut through the other way, I hope out of my mind that would happen.
Can we connect to the southern side of their property with their building? That will never happen.
The building's there. It's a, the building has access in front of it, along the southern side. That's what shows in the site plan. There's a driveway through it.
I don't see access.
Pardon me? Sure there is.
There's no way to get from the property to the east to, in front of that building you're proposing.
Are you talking about the in-front facing Bevel Road?
I absolutely am, and when you see it, there's a port cachet there, there's paver details, and there is a passageway in front of it.
That's not what it looks like on what we have.
Well, here's where there is. And what he's saying is do it here. That's what he says.
That's not what that looks like.
No, this passageway here.
Something? It looks like we have planks. Look, there's no drop.
No, the civil engineer corrected me, there's lawn there, but from the standpoint of the straight line, no matter how you slice it, we do not want to have that straight line.
There's lawn and trees there.
There's lawn and an entry sidewalk there. I thought it was a port cachet.
Okay, okay.
So it's not straight through, then?
No, sir, the only pavement is in behind the building, but it's not a good idea to do that.
Well, I disagree with that, but...
Are there any other questions of the applicant?
Neil McGinnis, 3869 South Nova, and I just wanted to, the nature of the Turner Lord of Eagles, beyond people helping people and stuff, is it's a private club, it requires membership, and that's what we talked about with Dennis and the staff when they talked about it originally, is that, you know, we don't want cross-access, because it's not the intent, there's not going to be people on this property that are not members of the club, so it's not, and on our intent to have people passing through this site. We're not open for public, and we're not trying to, we're not selling any goods or any wares, we're not looking for visibility, and quite frankly, the way that we've designed this site is so that it's, you know, private in a sense. It loads to the rear, and the last thing that we want to do is create a situation where we have created bypass, you know, through the middle, through our site, is specifically why it was designed this way to begin with, or it could have been pushed all the way to the back, and all the front parking be front of it. I guess I would like to make that point.
Well, and the other part of it is, when you think about the staff comment that says, "Keep traffic off Bevel Road," we're talking about a distance of less than 600 feet from the corner to the driveway. It's a very short distance, so it's not as if you somehow save traffic movements on Bevel. You're still going to have the traffic there, you just have the opportunity to detour through, and from the standpoint of the corner location, as Neil said, unless you're a member, you'd have no reason to go to this property anyway. And typically, the folks that come to the club aren't on a shopping trip, they've come to be at the club for a while, and then they head back home. So it's really an infringement upon the property, it doesn't accomplish a significant public benefit, and does create, I believe, significant chance for harm. Thank you, Chairman.
Concrete wall, no problem with it being stuccoed, correct? That's what I heard everyone say, doing that. Can we just talk a little bit about facing ridgewood in terms of design? I mean, if you're going to do a concrete block wall that's stuccoed, design-wise...
On the western edge, eastern edge, rather?
Eastern edge, actually, rather than a white plastic fence, that would look much better. I mean, to me, it's either...
I don't...
Would that work?
We actually agreed to put that there. The way that code reads, I'm sure you can speak, is intended to buffer, it's intended to buffer from both sides of the building, that front major thoroughfare right of way. So the intent of that code in the architectural style that you're talking about, the only reason why we did any of that was because right now, this building can be seen from US-1, but in the foreseeable future, that site's going to be developed, and that, and then it's going to be, it's not going to even fall under the criteria of that code. So what our intent was is say, "Okay, we added the architectural style that you asked for, and we're going to put in a fence that wouldn't be required if the gas station was still there." And that, I think that is important to know, why that even has to be dressed up in the first place, or falls under that criteria.
So I think the cumulative response is, we request that you not require it on the eastern boundary. Let us go with the plastic fence. And just coincidentally, let me just say, I live in a house that has a 300-foot-long plastic fence. I paid for it, I put it there, I chose it, I would not change it. It hasn't warped, bent, or done anything in the six or seven years that it's been there.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask one question now. Will that, will that driveway line up straight with, I guess that's Jones Street? Will it line up straight with Jones Street?
It will.
Well, if it does, are you going to allow a straight through? I mean, can you come out of the driveway and go straight?
I'm going to have to bring Mr. McGinnis, engineer, back up again. And remember too, that design principles cause you to make that kind of alignment.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. You will be allowed to come straight out of that site and go through Jones Street.
Really? Because, you know, you've got to go across six lanes of traffic just about when you're going.
I understand that.
And it's close to the corner too.
I.
Why wouldn't you have them just turn right, period? You have to turn right, period.
Because, and I understand where you're coming from and you look at these things from all these different perspectives, but at the end of the day, we're trying to get our client access to the site and then we have to go through Department of Transportation, which is usually the most stringent governing body. And we've gone through this with them and this is what they came back and they asked us for. Now, we don't want to say that we're so standing on this point so much that we're not willing to, you know, work with you on this, but at the end of the day, if the Department of Transportation has made this point, then.
Mr. Hoytman, if we could do this, because what you would do is you would preclude a left turn out onto Bevel. And then you actually would put more traffic onto Bevel if you compelled it to do the U-turn movement. It's because if you're saying someone that wants to go east on Bevel can't turn left and that, and that's what you'd have to do. Someone that wants to go straight or turn left is going to cross that northern side.
No, I wouldn't mind people turning left off there coming east because then they're over in the left lane. They don't have to go through three lanes to get to this lane.
I don't know how you differentiate it though, is my point. How do you stop someone that's to the middle from doing that?
I don't have to stop them there. I have to stop them when they're coming out of your driveway. I would just say turn right.
You would say, make them turn right?
Yes.
And go down and do a U-turn?
Yes.
Well, it's a U-turn with a light. When you go over.
And that allows you to get to the left lane.
There's median breaks before that. Let me say this, I've got experience personally on this point too. My office is on Nova Road. The DOT came in and spent $2 million plus to put medians there. Previously, we could come straight out of our driveway onto Nova Road and I promise you, traffic goes 70 miles an hour down Nova Road. And there was never an accident. It was a safe way to go. Now, what I have to do, I have to time it to cut across and then go down and do a U-turn. So what you get the opportunity to do with DOT's design and what you're suggesting is be put in danger twice when before you could have crossed half the road, have the median to protect you from one path of travel and then move on. It is so much less convenient and so much less safe. It's incredible to me that they spent that money to do what they did to Nova Road. It did not improve it. It didn't improve the safety, it didn't improve the access. And I deal with that daily. And it just simply doesn't work. And you've got much higher speed traffic where I am than you have where this property is on Bevel.
That medium isn't that large.
It's very narrow. It's a very narrow median. It's not like yours on.
You don't have much protection if you get out there.
It's not at all like Nova.
I think it's got a turning lane going left to the street, doesn't it?
No, it's very narrow.
Yeah.
Anyway, whatever.
We're sorry to argue with you so hard. We want to make this a nice site and make it a good site. And I don't think the things that are laid out are making it better.
Sir?
I guess my question, what was the mix-up? Dennis thought there was a fence. What was the mix-up?
I think at one time, well, certainly at one time, there was a fence proposed. And then this has been an evolutionary process and there have been multiple submissions. The neighbors don't want it. The design is such that it's not required. And we've worked with the neighbors and actually I handed Mr. Moore the notarized copy from the neighbors, who spoke, that they don't want the fence. And they have the option to require it.
So originally?
Originally, yes, because the code required it, because you had this use adjacent to a single-family home. But as you see from the property lines, the rear line of their home is very close to the property line. So they'd be boxed in by the fence. It wouldn't be like they got a benefit from it. It would be like you put them in sort of a cage that faces them out towards Bevel Road.
I was just a little alarmed that Dennis came to the meeting, they think.
No, it's not that. It's, there's been multiple submittals, redesigns, there's little pieces here and there. And it's easy to understand when you've got two fences, one here, another one there, you could think that one is the same. And that's all that happened. There's nothing tricky about it.
No, I mean, I, that wasn't my intention.
Yes, sir.
In terms of a fence, since Kevin brought that up, on the right elevation facing east and you said, you know, the only reason we're doing it is because right now it's facing Ridgewood. And of course, we've all talked about how long this has been vacant. But actually, was there any discussion at all of, you know, if you took some of the design elements of the front of the building facing Bevel, even just some of, they don't even have to be real windows, but a couple of those arched windows and did those, you wouldn't, I mean, then you're carrying your design around, you don't even need to pay for a fence.
This, this property has been vacant for a long time. The corner property, until recently, had a gas station. It's been demolished in the last year or two, as I recall. And ultimately, it's a corner location, you're going to have a building there. And these folks have already made a lot of modifications to their design to fit the architectural standards and what, you've got to keep in mind.
Wouldn't it be less expensive to do in a couple of fake windows like they require in Port Orange, for instance, and you could get rid of that plastic fence?
You can't forget the comments about the homeless folks and the stuff that goes on there.
Okay, so part of this is about securing the property.
Sure it is.
Well, that's not what was indicated by this gentleman here. He said, the only reason we did it is because. So you're actually doing this as a security reason as well.
There's more than one reason for doing it.
Okay, well, that wasn't indicated.
I just have one other comment about the traffic. Jones Street is currently, you can make a right turn or a left turn if you want to come out of Jones.
Currently at Jones, that's what people use to cut around the intersection at Bevel when they're southbound. They make a right-hand turn and cut across. And so Jones Street, you can go, it's all, it's a full access is what it is.
So there's traffic coming left and right out of Jones?
Presently, there is, yes, sir. And you may remember, that was where Captain D's table was and then there was, maybe still is, a gym and other things on that corner.
One more speaker? Mr. Wilbur Williams.
My name is Wilbur Williams, 612 Willie Drive in Daytona Beach, Florida. My concern, I just had a question about coming out of the property onto Bevel Road. I think that could be, potentially be a real, a real problem because if you're going across the traffic, you have train, you have train traffic that backs up to there. I think that's what some of the board members were, were speaking of, is if you're going straight across that property to, across the median, then you could potentially have a lot of traffic problems if you're trying to go back west across the median.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. The train tracks are probably 500 to 600 feet to the west.
Right.
And I did want to go back to Mr. Hoytman's questions in relation to whatever kind of signalization signage and so on we have. Remember that we've got to process through the DOT and we still have to process a site plan with your city staff and there's a traffic study. It may be that people come back with those kinds of recommendations, but right now, I think it's a situation where we're guessing what those things ought to be. And you're going to have professional input from a number of places to do that. And I think the same thing for Mr. Williams' question. The right-hand turn onto Bevel, there's a fair amount of distance between there and the track. And then after the track, and I can't remember exactly how far it is, but there is a traffic light adjacent to the golf course. And it's important to time that because there could be a golfer and you don't want to be there when they hit it over the fence.
Well, I don't have a whole lot of faith in DOT after I've seen them put that light there on Nova, on Nova and Orange Avenue and you can sit there, you can sit there till your hair grows.
Yes, sir. Well, maybe I'll go down there. Hang around there.
Let me just sit for a while. I do too.
Thank you.
All right. Board, are there any other comments?
Well, I think the only, I'm, yeah, I wanted to make the one comment because I think I have to make it all the time. We are going through this constantly about, again, nonprofits coming into Daytona Beach and taking land away that we have no tax revenue from. Now, I understand from the attorney that we can't make any premise like this. Now, these are good people and I've never heard anything bad about them, but they give, for instance, I think you mentioned, they give to the police department, they give to the fire department, and they do all these good things for the community. But we're not taking care of the citizens of the community who have to pay for these services and not get any help with it. And I wish there was some way we could solve this. Now, I know it's against, you know, all the laws that we can't do it, but I certainly wish we could do that. I, I, I just, we can't keep doing this. We do it with hospitals and we do it with everything, government buildings. We just have so much off the rolls. And it is a little, you know, it is a little disheartening. I just want to mention that in passing. I can't do anything about it.
The only thing with this, as I understand though, because it is a special request here zoning, we do have that option. Now, they don't have to agree with it, but it's certainly something that can, if you feel that strongly.
They can volunteer to do it, but we can't impose it as part of our permit as a condition. So it'd be outside of.
Well, we make it as a recommendation when it moves on, though.
Um, no.
You can.
No, no. They would just have to voluntarily say, we would like to pay a pilot. But we can't tie it to the land use approval.
Okay.
They volunteer to pay a bill. They really are good people. I just.
I, you know, it's interesting because I know from when I was on the commission, the Wilder Golf Course right behind them does a payment in lieu of taxes into the budget. And I don't recall that they were ever asked if they wanted to volunteer that. And it's done, you know, so. The, I, I do find, I agree with the shared access. They can figure out where it has to go, the cross-access. The Eagles are moving here from somewhere. It's nothing to say they're going to stay here forever. There's nothing to say that this, someone doesn't come back 20 years from now and wants to rezone it back to something else that's retail, which is the future land use or some other zoning. And it would be my understanding, if it's not done now, then that opportunity is.
That's correct.
Lost. I do think that that makes sense long-term. It doesn't have to be open at this point, but I think to have that as a future planning thing. And yes, it's, it's private, but you're asking for something. It wouldn't normally be, it wouldn't normally be there unless there's a rezoning. And I don't think that's a lot to ask as one of the conditions. That's just my, my thing to the board. I also do agree with the hours of operation as proposed in the letter, even though Mr. Morris said, then ignore it and let it be the normal law of the land. The normal law of the land is in Daytona Beach. We're the only 3:00 AM bar closing. And while this is not a bar, this doesn't also have to meet the alcohol ordinance requirements because it's a fraternal lodge and organization and.
If 2:00 is what.
Since that was proposed, I would be, and much more comfortable with that. Definitely the stuccoed wall on the north side.
It's agreeable.
I think that is very important. I was interested in the outdoor music, not having that, but I don't think that that's going to be a problem with what everyone said.
But if I might just speak to your first one, because there is a way to address that. From the standpoint of if the Eagles, we don't mind creating that so that if they vacate the property, it's there. We simply don't want it there in the context of this particular use. If it was two commercial uses, one on the corner, one on the side street where you've got similar traffic, it makes more sense than when you have a private club that is attempting to screen itself and to be secluded versus two commercial uses. So I can work with your legal staff to develop a covenant where if the use changes, from a fraternal organization to something else, that you have that option. And we can volunteer that so that you don't lose that tonight. That's doable and we're willing to work with you that way. But what we don't want is to have a member killed in a drive aisle on a private piece of property because somebody's trying to avoid the light. That's our issue.
I think that's a little over the top, but.
You wouldn't if you were laying there dead.
Yeah, well.
Have you seen the drivers in this town lately?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I'm shocked every day I get on the roads here. But I, you know, I understand a lot of the concerns and comments. I just want to say, I think it's great that they're going to build something on this vacant lot that's been vacant forever and I think it's going to be an approval to the area.
Would that work, cross-access?
Which cross-accesses?
The, if it, if it changed again back from a private.
Well, when someone is attending anything on this piece of property and they want to go to the property or any of the businesses that will occur immediately adjacent, the only way to get to it will be whatever DOT requires exiting from the site.
Right.
Making U-turns, making left turns, going down, going to the intersection, making another U-turn and going into the business right next door without a cross-access.
That assumes that nobody can actually walk down the sidewalk. This is so close to the corner, if you actually wanted to go there, the smart thing to do would be to walk.
To walk over. Okay.
And I'm certainly willing to work with your staff to make it so that you don't surrender this right and if there's two.
Yeah, I just don't want to lose it for down the road.
Understand and we can work that out.
I don't want to be, I don't want to be shortsighted here.
That's the only concern, I think.
We can work that out.
And are one of the major concerns.
Well, does that work for the access, for the street in the back also? Or we're just talking about the cross-access in the front?
I'm just talking about the cross-access.
Well, what I think the neighbors have asked for and what we're willing to do is to simply build the wall all the way across. That's what the neighbors would like. And, and when you look at the conditions, and I'll have this argument with Tracy sometime when the rest of y'all aren't around and have to spend five hours while we argue. You're looking at how to avoid impacting in a negative way the adjacent properties. And the adjacent properties have said they will be impacted negatively if you cause it to be there. So they're asking for it not to be there and we're perfectly fine with that.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with that too. I agree with Virginia.
Because I think you've worked very well with the, you know how I feel about working with neighborhood residents?
Yes, sir.
I think you've worked very well with the people on Virginia and also with the single-family property. That's why I was concerned about the back access. If we need to continue to have the access to Virginia as one of our conditions, what can we remove?
That would be up to your discretion. Staff is suggesting that that, the right-of-way goes to the property. So it's a matter of what we're doing with this property now or in the future. If there isn't a rezoning request or a public hearing request in the future, I don't know that you would be able to require them to make any improvements on this piece of property connected to that road.
But the continuation of Virginia has been vacated on this property for a number of years, though.
On this property, but not at the, not into that road.
Up to.
Not to that right-of-way.
So, it's up to, the right-of-way is up to there?
To the property, yes.
But it's, it's an unapproved right-of-way, Virginia?
Yes, it's, it's flatted and non-built.
It's grass.
Correct.
So, so what if the wall was there, but in the future something happened and, and the right-of-way was, was needed for some reason?
The-
Was needed for what? For who? Which right-of-way?
Virginia.
The road right-of-way, yeah, Virginia.
Well, we would have, I don't know that we would be asking for right-of-way through their property if it used to be there and was vacated. And the city made the decision to vacate it if it was there and vacate it to the edge of their property.
Also, if you extended the right-of-way, which is what I thought was being asked at first, you'd have two turning movements so close to each other that DOT would never allow it to enter in the first place. You'll notice in the aerials, there's a driveway kind of lines up with this road. That's not being opened. DOT will not permit it.
All right, any-
I was just going to make, in terms of the motion, Mr. Morris, we would need to clarify which conditions you agree to, and then you can, we can vote on that. And so, if they, if it does not include conditions this board wants, then they would vote it down, and when it goes to City Commission, it would require a supermajority.
Do we need to vote on five first?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to vote on five first?
We would need to vote on the rezoning first.
Yeah, that was in, that was in regards to six.
Okay.
Did you want to hear six first, hear his comment first?
Oh, you guys can, if you're done with the-
I just wanted to hear the conditions that's-
Oh, okay.
Okay. Is that what you want me to do, Mr. Moore?
Uh-huh.
So, from a standpoint of agreeable conditions, we're agreeable to a concrete masonry wall with a stucco finish on the sides of it on the northern boundary. Number two, we are agreeable to deletion of the fence adjacent to the single-family A-frame house conditioned upon notarized agreement from the property owner. For the rest of the board, I've delivered that to Mr. Moore this evening. So, we have that in hand, and the neighbors are here. The third condition is that the hours of operation will have a cessation of 2:00 AM and not be governed by the general law. I don't recall the beginning hours.
Says 8:00 AM.
7:00 AM or something like that.
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM.
Originally said 8 till 11, Sunday through Thursday, and 8 till-
So, this would be 8 to 2.
Okay. And it's, it's evening hours that are a concern.
Right.
And then we're agreeable to entering a covenant with the city that allows the cross-access to be compelled in the event that the Eagles are no longer, or the Eagles or another fraternal organization are no longer the occupants of that property. I think those are the things that we discussed. If I forgot something, please remind me. So, we are agreeable to those conditions as stated.
But still, a traffic study will have to come back in some way, our approval. Is that correct?
That would be in terms-
The final site plan with, at the site.
Dennis, I'm not sure what our Public Works staff said relative to that.
Meeting their traffic requirement, a traffic statement, or traffic analysis, if it is required, it would have to be analyzed and approved prior to a final site plan. So, before they were able to move forward with any type of a building permit, we'd have to have that in place, just like we would have to have the FDOT approval in place prior to a final site plan.
So, that's requirement without a, is a requirement.
Right.
That is normal.
Correct.
I, I think that that covers it, Chairman. As I said, if I forgot something, somebody, please remind me.
Motion to approve rezoning fraternal order of Eagles, DEV 2011-105.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes?
Motion passes nine zero.
All right, now, we're ready for-
And, and how do we do this motion again with-
With the conditions he agrees to?
The applicant conditions.
Right, and then if you don't, if you feel there should be more, you can vote no.
Okay. Motion to approve special use permit fraternal order of Eagles, DEV 2011-106 to include applicant agreements as stated on the record. Conditions, applicant conditions as stated on the record.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Motion passes nine zero.
Sorry to take so long on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, we have an easy one coming up now.
Let's see.
Put a lot of information in this one. I hope it comes out.
Next, secretary, if we just have new item number seven?
Item number seven, comprehensive sign plan. Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, DEV 2011-117, was our judicial hearing.
All right, can I hear from staff?
Thank you, Dennis Mirosek, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. Item number seven is a request by Rob Merrill from Cobb Cole on behalf of Chris Hardisty with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University to approve a resolution adopting a comprehensive sign plan for the Embry-Riddle campus. The site location, I believe you're all quite familiar with the, the Embry-Riddle main campus. From memory, I'm sure you'll remember that, that it runs from ISB. No. 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 That'll, that'll come up next after, for the applicant. Sorry about that. Well, the, again, the Embry-Riddle campus, it's over 140 acres, located south of ISB on South Clyde Morris Boulevard, runs as far south as the Daytona Beach International Airport. The request for the comprehensive sign plan, CSP is permitted for colleges consisting of at least 35 contiguous acres. As I mentioned, the campus is over 140 acres. The comprehensive signage plan will identify all existing and proposed signage for the, for the campus. Several different sign types have been proposed. These include site type one identification signs, campus directional and informational signs, graphic and decor, and regulation signs. Wanted to go through some of these signs to, to give you an idea of what we were looking at. I put up a map of the location of, of where the signs are going to be located on the campus, both across the street from Clyde Morris and all the way north to ISB, which is located over here. It's kind of laying off to the side, so I just want to get you your orientation. This would be ISB. This is Clyde Morris going to the south. This is the airport property. This is the east side of the campus. This is the west side of the campus. The signs that I've identified there, these are the sign type ones. These are identification signs, the primary, existing primary campus identification signs and proposed campus identification signs. The existing primary sign is located at the main end, the current main entrance. The two other primary campus ID signs are located at the south on either side of Clyde Morris in what will be part of an improved loop road. The sign that's proposed and the symbol where you can find it, again, this is for the existing. The other, the other two don't have the E for the existing, but this is the existing sign located at the, the current main entrance of the campus. Next, I wanted to show you the, the secondary signs. We've got a number of secondary signs that are shown up on the, on our location map. One of the, one of, well, a couple of them may, may be existing secondary signs, and I can take a look at that and show you what we're, what we're talking about. The sign that's in the middle is an existing sign, and that's located across from the main entrance of the, of the campus. There's your symbol for the secondary, primary secondary sign. And then a couple of the other signs that are, are provided for secondary signs on the The next sign we'll take a look at is going to be the, the marquee, excuse me, I'm sorry. That's the, the overpass signs. These are the pedestrian overpass signs. We've got overpasses located over Clyde Morris going between the two campuses, two portions of the campuses. And we also have a, an overpass existing on Richard Petty Boulevard. Those are the ones that are identified up there. Give you a couple of pictures of what they're looking like. The top photo is actually what the, the overpasses currently look like and what the proposed signage would be for the, the current overpasses. The picture on the bottom is a proposed signage for a possible design of an overpass that would be going over, at the very least, Clyde Morris Boulevard. So, we've, the applicant has provided a potential signage plan for what may, may be a proposed overpass on Clyde Morris Boulevard. Next, we'll take a look at the, one of my favorite signs. This is the marquee ID sign. This is a sign that's going to have a prominent location at Clyde Morris Boulevard and International Speedway Boulevard. You can see it flashing right up over there. This sign is, is meant to let people know who are passing by exactly what they're, what they're going to be looking at. This is Embry-Riddle's main campus, and I think this sign does a pretty good job of showing that to everybody, that it is the main campus. And finally, as far as the sign, sign type ones and identification signs, we wanted to look at the, the EMC sign. Colleges are, are permitted, colleges with at least eight contiguous acres are permitted to have EMC signs on their campus by code. Signs are limited to be eight feet. This is a, a request for a CSP. CSPs can request additional height for their ESPs, and in this case, the applicant has requested an additional height for the proposed EMC. Put a picture up there of the EMC. You see the, the sign area. The total sign area is maxed out at 360 feet. That's just the area that the sign could go on. The, the actual EMC portion of that could be up to 50% of that. If I'm not mistaken, they're only requesting approximately 60 square feet for that EMC. And then you have your static sign at the top, still meeting the code, not exceeding code requirements. The only area, the only request for a variance with this comprehensive sign plan, again, as I mentioned, EMCs are required to, to be a maximum height of eight feet. The proposed EMC is 14 feet, 7 inches, 6 feet, 7 inches above the, the maximum height permitted for an EMC. Sign type two discusses really campus directional and informational signs. You've probably seen signs similar to this around the campus. The campus is, has great opportunities for additional signs. This does a really good job of clarifying and, and helping the students and visitors be able to manipulate the, the extensive campus web as they go from building to building. Sign type three, graphic and decor signs. These are miscellaneous signs that, that are identified in the, in the comprehensive sign plan. Whoops. Giving dimensions for maximum, maximum square footage for each particular type of sign. And finally, the other sign type noted as regulation signs, signs that are required either by Florida Building Code or by ADA requirements and must be part of the, must be part of the signage plan. As for a recommendation, based on a staff analysis and review, the request for approval for the comprehensive sign plan for Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University will be in compliance with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan if approved by final action of the City Commission. A majority vote by the planning board members present and voting is required for recommendation of approval to the City Commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions, staff?
I have one I'd like to ask. I think you indicated that the only sign that, that needs a variance or that is different than the rules are is that-
Is the EMC sign is exceeding, exceeding the requirement.
And you said that the, you said the limit's about eight feet and this is about 14.
This is 14 feet, 7 inches on the EMC sign, correct.
And so, how far from the road is that roughly?
The current look, the, well, maybe I can have the applicant speak more direct, more directly on that. The, we have a, a general location of where this is going to be located, but the code is clear on how far it can be from the road from the right-of-way, and it would have to meet that requirement because it wasn't a waiver request at this, at this time.
Well, the main reason I was asking that is that I do think that the further you're away from the road, then the more we can allow in the way of size, because it's not right there in your face. But anyway, that's, that's fine. But you said it is 14 feet.
14 feet, 7, 7 inches high.
Could, could I just ask legal one question, since Dennis showed it up there and it is in here? They gave as a pole-mounted flag, an American flag. We, Canada, they can fly any kind of American flag size they want, can't they? I mean, I thought the American flag is a free speech thing.
Um, I'm not aware of a regulation, but let me look it up while you guys are talking.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis. Chairman, board members, Rob Merrill for the record, 150 Magnolia Avenue with Cobb Cole, here on behalf of Embry-Riddle. I have Chris Hardisty from Embry-Riddle in the back of the room with me as well, Paul Montberger and Ron Hatcher from Dunn Bell Signs, if you have any specific questions for them. You know, Dennis does such a good job sometimes, I don't have a whole lot to add. And I was going to refer you to some specific pages that he did go over in the, in the comprehensive sign plan, but I wondered, did you, I was told you all were given a larger version to this. I might go ahead and point-
Not larger than that.
Oh, same as this. That's what I, when I said larger, I meant larger than the normal agenda packet. I'm going to go ahead and run you through a couple of these pages just to highlight some of the things that Dennis did mention, just for your benefit. And I know most of you were here when we processed the original comprehensive sign plan for the Speedway and for the hospital, I think, right? Most everybody. So, I don't want to run you through all what this thing is, how it's, how it's structured, because this is, for the most part, the structure of this, of this sign plan is identical to those other two. It has the, the general location on page, if you look at page eight, it gives you the, a bigger picture of the, the map that Dennis had on the overhead. And what you see is you see a lot of different keys and colors that correspond to the signs that you see on the following several pages with a, a more detailed description of the sign types. But this gives you the general location of where those signs are. And Bob, when you were asking about the EMC sign, you'll see that there's one that has a P with a little star around it that has, has the red on it. You see the red one there? If you're on page eight now, it gives you the gra, it shows you the plan view of where all the signs are going to be. Page eight.
So, that is right.
That's, that's the one sign that's allowed to have electronic message on it, and that gives you the location of it. Now, in terms of the actual proximity to the, to the paved road, I can't tell you that for sure. That would have to be shown on a, on a, an actual plan for the sign that we present to the city for the sign permit. But the, the right-of-way there is very wide. So, when you're talking about the perspective of the sign, I'm going to show you a, a video in just a minute that'll give you that perspective as it relates to the width of the right-of-way that I think will be helpful to answer your, your question about, well, the size of the sign kind of depends on how big the area is that you're looking at it in. So, that'll give you that in just a second. If you flip over to page, let's see, page 10, I know that from experience with you guys, that the electronic message center sign is something you want to make sure, that I'll make sure I highlight for you, and that's the sign that's shown on, on the top of that page. Again, this is, in every respect, compliant with all of the general design guidelines you all put in that original code, other than the height, which I know you've seen that theme before. And as you see the video that I'm going to show you, you'll, I think you'll get a picture of the perspective that Bob was alluding to and, and the proportion, which I think is, when you're talking about size of things, I think that's, that's pretty critical, especially signage. And then the, the sign on the bottom of that page, Dennis also showed you on the overhead, I think we've referred to as the marquee sign that we're, we're, we're planning for the, for the corner, which I think will be a nice addition to, to the ISB quarter. And then the following page shows the, the signs that we're proposing on the overpasses. And as Dennis mentioned, that you'll see there's an enhancement of that lower overpass to, to add an area to put the sign. And again, that's, that's, that is, is, is only conceptual. Both of those signs will require approval from other agencies other than you, and we will be getting those approvals before we can, before we can build those signs. With that, I'll go ahead and I see that the video, I call it a video, it's a simulated video of, of driving north on Clyde Morris towards the existing overpass. So, you see, before you, before you start it, let me just mention where you are. You're heading, you know, towards, heading north from a place that's near the entrance of the campus. So, you're seeing the buildings on the east side of the, of the campus on your left. Am I right about that?
Yeah. Just, just one little, just one little item. When we first looked at this, we thought the EMC sign was going to be on this side of the street.
Yeah, I was going to mention that. We got, it's on the wrong, it is, and the reason why I was getting you oriented is I was going to tell you that, although the overpass is where it is, the electronic sign that you'll see is on the wrong side of the street. But it, it gives you the same proportional scale and perspective as if it were on the opposite side. So, I guess your computer's not as-
Going towards the hospital.
Going towards the hospital, coming from the south, yep. Now, there, if you kind of, can you stop it? There's a way to stop it? That, well, it's okay. Keep rolling. You're stopping anyway.
Okay, there a way to the top of the left.
That, that sign on the left is the only electronic message center sign, and it will be on the opposite side of the street.
On the opposite side.
But it'll be positioned the same as you saw it there. We, we decided to switch it on the opposite side of the street, so it'll be on the side of, on the, on the, the east side of the street instead of the west.
So, that's good.
You see what I'm saying? So, as you're going north here, that- So as you're going north here, that would be west where you saw it.
Yes.
But it's really going to be on the east side. In the, in the, as you see, as I pointed out to you originally, in the area of where the fieldhouse is.
On the same side as the fieldhouse.
Yes. Yep.
So it's in front of the fieldhouse.
That's where we decided to put it instead of over there.
Over in front of the fieldhouse, okay.
And again, it's actually going to be in a sort of a more open area than over on this side, but still, when you see it driving down the road, it's going to be of the same scale as you see here.
In fact, like that.
So I mean, the point is, we're in a real wide right-of-way, high, high, high speed, high traffic and it's, and it's, I think it's, it's in scale and perspective. You be the judge. There it is. And the, and the overpass sign, right.
And that's the proposed height, right?
That's right.
14 feet, seven inches.
That's exactly right, yep. That's pretty much all I have for you and if you have any questions.
Well, I'll tell you, your map showing where the various signs were in here was quite helpful. Thank you. Any questions? Board? No? I did take the time to count up the number of signs that you had listed here and it kind of caught my attention. Not counting the graphics or the flags or the wall signs or temporary signs that matter, event signs or sport revenue signs. You have 289 total signs.
Right.
But for the size of campus that you have and...
A lot of those signs are real...
Having gone on that campus over the years, it is confusing and not knowing where you're going unless you're familiar with the campus, it is difficult. So I...
Larry, I'd point out, a lot of those signs are real small directional and parking lot signs that just show you you're in the right place. So yeah, they're helpful signs.
Personally, I have no problems.
Thanks.
All right.
I did have one question. Sorry about, but I like all the signs here. I guess I just wonder, I don't know, maybe it's just my eyes. Would that, would that sign make a difference if we were driving on the right side of the road? Would you think that would change? You know, because there, the signs on this side of the road is on those side. So if you were driving on the right side and that sign was right here next to you, would it make any difference? I guess that's what I'm thinking versus looking across the street like we were today.
Kevin, one of the things I'd point out to you is the, the right-of-way, the area that we don't have any right to put the sign in is way wider than the paved road itself there. And I don't know, Carrie, do you have that? I don't have a survey with me, but I know that that's a real wide right-of-way.
I'm sorry, which...
What I was pointing out was the Clyde Morris right-of-way for, for the benefit of the board in terms of how close the sign would be to the paved road, the relationship of the right-of-way width to the actual paved width there is, is way wide. So it'd be, it'd be way off the paved road.
That's what I mean.
Because we couldn't put it in the right-of-way. That has to be our problem.
Well said.
Do we have anyone in the audience that'd like to speak for or against? Board?
Motion to appro...
Oh, we are, we're...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Going to discussion?
Yes.
My, my challenge with the EMC, which is the challenge we have every month, is nobody can seem to present us with a EMC that meets the requirements of the, the ordinance that the city commission worked two years on before they passed. So we're put in the position all the time of approving a variance to the ordinance that the city commission passed, which is why I always have difficulty voting for anything. And although it may only be a few extra feet, I still have difficulty. And actually, if this was in the middle of the campus where nobody could see it from a public road, I probably wouldn't have any difficulty with it. But now we have it on a, we have it on a public road even though it is part of an EMC and we can give part of a comprehensive sign plan and we can give variances in comprehensive sign plans, but even the variances we give in the comprehensive sign plans are still governed by our EMC. That's the challenge I have with this.
And you and I had a dialogue about that in a previous context.
Yes.
And so I want, I do want to remind you, and I don't know that I said this to you in that context, I have to go to the city commission meetings with these things and I don't know that you actually go witness those things, but I will say to you that one of the things that you mentioned was the city commission spent a lot of time coming up with this and yet now everybody seems to be wavering from, well, the, the commission approved it, the, the previous one, the other context, and, and they understood completely that I would come back with either a PUD or a CSP to deal with those things, the height issue primarily. They knew it, they knew it ahead of time because when they were passing the ordinance, I told them. I said, "You guys go ahead and pass this with this eight feet," but nobody's going to do that. They're going to come back with a PUD or a comprehensive sign plan and show you when it's appropriate and where, how it's appropriate to have a larger sign. And that's exactly what we've done. So there was no hidden agenda. Nobody was hiding the ball on them. They knew that from the start. So they weren't surprised at all when I came back to them and said, "The sign's taller than eight feet." That's, that would be the other sign, the other context we were talking about. And I don't think they'll be surprised by this one either, John. So I don't know that helps you, but in, in, when we were going through the process with the planning board with the ordinance and when I was working with Pam Woods, who was sort of the liaison, we've, we, we talked very clearly and there, again, there was no hidden agenda about the height of the sign and the eight feet, just that people wouldn't build those signs. Why it ended up in the ordinance that way? I'm not sure. In part, the reason why I didn't object to it is because I knew there would be opportunities for the universities, the hospital and the others that qualified for either CSP or PUD to come back and say, "Here's how I'm different." And that's what we've done. I know it seems like it's backwards to do it that way. Had I, if, if I could recreate this whole thing and I would have had four votes, I would have said, "Don't put the eight feet in there because people will be confused by it later and think that everybody's asking for variances just like you're doing." So I'm not faulting you for asking that question. It would have been better had we put something in there that was more realistic, but I pro, I can almost promise you, nobody will, will come in and say, "Eight feet works for me." And here's, here it is. Unfortunately.
But yet we're, we're stuck with the ordinance that says eight feet.
But the ordinance also...
Even, even within a sign plan.
If we're going to fixate on what the ordinance says, we also have to fixate on the thing that says, "Except CSP, except PUD." Those are also in the ordinance. It's there. That's why I'm here. It's just as much part of the code as what you're saying. It's just as much part of the code and always has been as what you're, what you're talking about. So I'm with you. I understand the frustration, but I'm hoping that you can see that this wasn't something that should be a surprise. I tried not to make it a surprise.
May I, um...
Yes.
May I add my perspective? To me, it's a good thing that we have such a stringent and rigid ordinance because the average Joe is not going to invest in an eight-foot sign. So that kind of discourages your average guys from getting a message center and having all these electric, electronic signs out there. But we have a few key, key superstars in our community. We have universities. We have large hospitals. We, you know, we want to attract that kind of thing. And having this kind of ordinance, to me, makes them really jump through the hoops and, and makes it much more stringent so that we can look at it and we can pick it apart and we can say what we don't like and what we do like. You know, the dog track that we were, talked for hours about that. That was a good thing. It's not what we want to see on every, you know, average Joe's commercial property up and down our main thoroughfares. It's what we do want to see on superstars and key players in our community so we can really pick it apart and make it what we really like and they have to jump through all the hoops to get what we, what we really want. So I, I see it as a good thing. And I see Embry-Riddle as a superstar in this community. I, I think, you know, you know, airplanes are like fine motorcycles and fine cars. It's, it's art and function in motion and that's what they're doing and their signs actually reflect that to me. So I'm glad that we have this kind of tight, tight ordinance where we can really look at it and have our say.
May I ask a question and make a comment if I'm allowed?
Yeah.
And being a rookie on the board, I have to ask this. Am I allowed to make comments? I'm going to have to recuse myself from voting. My wife's an employee at Embry-Riddle. Was that, is that enough?
No. No.
Wonderful.
This is to put money in your pocket when you vote.
Actually, I know that, I can do better than money though.
It's a pretty clear question.
Well, hey, you know, I just want to get everything out of the oven. I, here, here are my thoughts. When I first got on this board, I remember the, the sign issues and I remember doing some research, finding out what, what it says. And I remember the first time I voted on a sign, I was to the, to the law. If this is what it says, this is what it says. But you know what? I mean, I have to be honest with you. I really started thinking about it. And to me, what makes so much sense is you can't have something that this is what it is for the whole community. You have to have discretion. You have to be able to look at what, what it's going to, what it's applicable to. The same type of sign that you would stick in front of a Walmart or a, or a Winn-Dixie or a Publix is going to be a different type of sign that you'd put in front of Embry-Riddle or NASCAR. And, and the more I thought about it, you know, I was wrong a couple of months, several months ago. I, I was. We have, we have to use discretion. We got to look at things on a case-by-case and I'm glad there's a spot in there now that says that, yeah, this is the, this is the code, but if it's, you know, this, this is the exception that we can, we can rule on. I'm, and I just thought about it enough. I thought, you know, and I read this over the week, I thought, just, it just makes sense to go from a case-by-case and not just every time the sign thing's put in front of us, we just jump back to what was voted on back then. Because evidently, the commission approved the other one. So even then themselves feel like, well, there's room for discretion. That's my interpretation. Those are my thoughts.
John, I have to say, I do agree a lot with you, but I think that Janet just clarified that very well, very succinctly. I'm just happy that I didn't see a 35-foot pole sign that Rob and Tracy liked, so it's not that.
Well, and...
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I, I mean, I understand everybody's point of view, but I do see where John's point is. I mean, and the thing is, you know, it's eight feet and now it's 14 feet. You know, it's almost double, a few feet, but it's doubled almost. I mean, and that's, that's what my fear is, is that people are going to continue to come with these plans and next it's going to be 25 feet and it's going to be 30, then it's going to be 40. And they're like, so well, you know, it's just it. And then just like, I mean, I really don't have a personal thing against Mr. Merrill. I think he's a talented attorney, but you know, it's, just like he said a few months back, like, hey, I have a right to come with this sign plan, just like, basically said, you guys have a right to vote against it. So both of us, we all have a right here. If you, if you think, you know, if it's something you think is going to be detrimental, you know, to policy or the community, I mean, you can vote against it, so.
Well, I, I agree the same, same way. It's almost twice the size and thought the same way, but I pass by there almost every day, so I'm very familiar with the site. And I always did envision it by the fieldhouse because that was what was on your drawing, so, that, that I saw. So I didn't see a problem. And it is, is separate.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. We, some, sometime along the line, I do think we have to take into account what it's in front of. That, for instance, at the Speedway, that one at the Speedway is huge.
Yes.
But that's a huge place. And so we should take into account what's going on rather than having a regulation. However, you are right, and you are right, that I'm glad we set it at eight because they've doubled that now and if we set it at 30, they'd be at 60. So now I'm just happy we're at eight.
Yes, that's right.
But the great thing...
Oh, it doesn't matter. You're all going to go up.
But the, but the great thing about this process is that if they do come up with a 60-foot sign, and it, and it's ridiculous and it makes no sense, we would all be in unison and say no.
Exactly. Just because you're a superstar does not make you exempt. It makes you have to work harder for what you really want and make us happy. Just because you're a superstar doesn't, doesn't mean we say yes.
Exactly.
We can still say no.
And what's appropriate, and what's appropriate. And it, and again, the size of the building, the size of the complex, the impact they have on the community, you know, every, every visitor we have come into Daytona, we'd love for them to know where Embry-Riddle is. I mean, that's one of our flags of the, of the town.
I mean, we say superstars, I guess, I mean, I guess superstar, you know, is all your perspective. I mean, I think the small business with four employees, I think that person's, that entrepreneur's a superstar too. Just because, just because you might have, you know, you have this big name and a lot of notoriety doesn't make you the only superstar in the community. There's some people that people don't know that help the community function that are also superstars. And that's been my, that's been my concern with the sign plan, the comprehensive sign plan from the beginning.
They have an opportunity for the sign.
No, they don't. Actually, except that, the thing is, the policy statement...
For the smaller sign.
The commission made the exceptions very narrow. And, you know, if you look back at what it is, it's not just any business. I mean, as Rob pointed out, part of the policy statement is, it's an institute of higher learning. It's a hospital medical district. It's a major sport district of 50 contiguous acres or 35 acres for planned development for sports and entertainment venues. I mean, it's, and it's places of assembly with at least 1,000 total permanent or fixed seats. And so it's very narrow and, and if they don't want to meet the regulations that we're all talking about, eight feet and all this, then they have to come in with a comprehensive sign plan or plan development agreement and then they have to meet it in that. But the commission has already decided where the exceptions are and that's the policy that we go by.
It's because we don't want to look like Las Vegas.
I agree. I absolutely agree with that. But, you know, they have decided and I, I, I agree with what, it makes us take a harder look.
That's for sure.
Purposely, one of the reasons why we have such a stiff setup as far as guidelines in this particular subject is because we have to pay attention with an open mind, as all have stated, about what we want in Daytona Beach. For clarity, it would make it easier and he did promise a real good sign plan in the last meeting that we had with him. And I think the plan that they came up with is right on target for helping us make future decisions when we do have others who are coming in with such plans. And it'll help in making us study our own guidelines a little harder. But it'll also give us an opportunity to just pay attention to what's happening in our city, especially new business and especially existing co-ops and, and businesses that we have in Daytona Beach. You just can't say no because of a set rule. And we haven't done that. We've had to talk about it more than once as far as signage and especially this particular signage. And I, I like that because it helps me understand city, what we want, and I can listen more clearly to the presenters. So it's very professionally done and we got what he promised as far as the sign presentation utilized in the PUDs and everything else that we talked about in the previous meeting.
Yes, as my concluding thought, I'm glad we had this discussion. It's a discussion that I think we, we should be having. And Ms. Lasege and Mr. Bohan have convinced me that looking at the requirements in the context that they presented and situation. So that's why, that's why I, I think I will change my vote to a, a yes, although as you knew, I was starting out with a no.
Well, as we, Mr. Hart stated...
But I have been convinced by the discussion. For this, for this narrow comprehensive sign plan situation and sports venue situation, I think we are using our discretion.
Just the last thing we have to keep in mind now, you have to be so careful, you have to be careful of precedent. Because what happens now, you set it and then the next guy comes in and saying, hell, he's got one that's 30 feet tall.
But we can say no.
It's okay.
We can say no.
No, we're going to...
No, I know, but we have to keep that in mind because you have to know what is the norm and what is, what's reasonable.
Exactly.
And reasonable gets bigger all the time. So just be careful.
No, because we'll have the next university soon.
Now, we still have another one to go, and I don't know, I guess DSC or somebody could come back, well, theirs is 14.7, I want 18.
Who's next?
Can I say something?
I don't want to slow the minute, I'm sorry.
That's okay. To that comment, though, you know that anybody that's gonna come into this city and want to propose this huge, you know, sign that's tacky and wacky and wild are gonna go to the city, and they're gonna give them a little history. They're gonna give them a little case history and say, do you think you really want to propose this? Because this is what's gone down before, and this is what they ended up getting. So I think it's good. We are setting a precedent.
Well, no, it is good.
You know, we are saying, you know, it's not just willy-nilly, we're not just gonna allow anything, you really have to make us happy, it has to be tasteful, it has to be in context of what you're doing. We can't all have a Speedway sign. So, you know, I think it's good. You are correct that we're setting a precedence, but it's in a good way.
If we've all had our say, I'm ready for a motion.
Motion to approve comprehensive sign plan, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, DEV 2011-117.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Thanks very much for your time.
Motion passes. Eight, one.
All right. Is everyone okay, or you want to go on to the next?
Get her dance.
All right. Item number eight.
Item number eight. Land Development Code text amendment, prohibited commercial uses in the North Ridgewood area, DEV 2012-009.
Mr. Marosek.
Thank you, Dennis Marosek, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. Next item is a request by the Development and Administrative Service Department, Planning Division, to amend Article 16 Overlay Classifications and Regulations, Section 8.3, North Ridgewood Classification, Prohibited Uses of the Land Development Code to prohibit certain commercial uses in the North Ridgewood area. Give you an idea of where the areas that were located for the North Ridgewood area, we have Spruce, Aberdeen, Rivera Streets to the west, Mason Avenue to the north, Beach Street to the east, George Ingram Boulevard, and Fairview Avenue to the south. Have a copy of the future land use map for you, but more importantly, I have a copy of the current zoning for you. Within the current zoning, you see some of the zoning that we have here, the railroad tracks that run through. The right portion of the site with some M1 zoning located in that area. We also have some industrial M1 zoning located in this area, and some BW zoning that's down there in the corner. A little history on the North Ridgewood overlay and how we got to this point. The North Ridgewood overlay was approved by the City Commission, January 18, 2012. This was in a response to social service restrictions that were going in place in all of the redevelopment areas. The purpose of the North Ridgewood overlay was to protect the area from the migration of uses that may be located or relocated to the area as a result of the redevelopment area restrictions. Staff put together some restrictions, and you've seen these before, they've come to the planning board, and these are the ones that were approved at the City Commission for the North Ridgewood area. Some of the uses that are prohibited in the North Ridgewood area are, and these are some of the commercial uses, any accommodations except hotel, motel, historic bed and breakfast, adult bookstores and theaters, blood banks, check cashing services, flea markets, plasma centers, tattoo parlors, and temporary labor hiring halls. A lot of these, as a matter of fact, all of these are uses that were prohibited in the redevelopment areas. For social service uses, it was one of the focuses we were looking on in the area. Prohibited social service uses include community residential homes and similar facilities, congregant meal facilities, food pantries and feeding programs, homeless services, homeless shelters, and recovery home and treatment facilities. Something that was added by the planning board and approved by the City Commission had to do with how prohibited is prohibited. Something was included into the Land Development Code for this North Ridgewood area that would stress exactly how prohibited this was, and I'm gonna read it for you, because it's pretty important. Prohibited uses in a North Ridgewood classification cannot be permitted through a special use, public or semi-public use, or through a planned development rezoning process. That means prohibited is prohibited. Additional comments on uses identified for consideration came about during the January 18 City Commission meeting, when we were presenting the North Ridgewood overlay. We've had a resident speak about possible commercial uses that should have been included, that were not included for the North Ridgewood area. These uses were pawn shops, bail bonds, medical office, and in the medical office, it was broken down to pain clinics, abortion clinics, social service clinics, et cetera, salvage recycling facilities, and then also commercial storage facilities or outside commercial storage, and then also auto storage. So what staff did, we did an analysis of those particular types of uses and how they might possibly fit into, and if it would be prudent to include them in the list of prohibited uses in the North Ridgewood area. First thing we looked at was pawn shops. Pawn shops are considered a classification retail, sales, and service. Currently, I believe there's only one pawn shop in the North Ridgewood overlay, 347 Mason Avenue. Pawn shops, that particular type of use is permitted in BR1, BR2, and BA zoning districts. Pawn shops are prohibited in the South Atlantic, the midtown, and the Main Street redevelopment areas. Now, that's important, because as you recall, one of the purposes of the North Ridgewood area was to protect the area from uses that were gonna be prohibited in the redevelopment areas from moving into that area. Based on that information, staff does recommend including pawn shops to the list of prohibited uses in the North Ridgewood overlay. The next use we looked at was bail bonds. Bail bonds fall under a classification of a business service. Business services are permitted in RP, BP, BR1, BR2, BA, BW, and M1, quite an extensive list of the zoning districts in the North Ridgewood area. Bail bonds currently are not prohibited in any of the redevelopment areas. Taking that information and not really having the analysis time to determine whether bail bonds would in fact be detrimental to that area, staff is recommending not to include bail bonds in the list of prohibited uses for the North Ridgewood overlay. As far as the medical offices, and it was broken down...
Excuse me, are there any bail bond areas in there right now?
I don't believe that there are any bail bonds. I think there is one located in a redevelopment area on Ridgewood.
Yeah, it is. Just outside.
Yeah.
Across from the courthouse.
The medical office was broken down into a couple of different categories that fit the, or may fit that medical office use. Pain clinics, pain clinics and pill mills, abortion clinics and social service clinics. Real quickly, I just wanted to discuss pain clinics and pill mills. This is something that the state has taken on, and they've been pretty aggressive about, and everything we've seen, they've been making some pretty good progress on reducing the amount of pain clinic or pill mills from growing any further than they were, and they're actually going after them pretty good. There are also additional legislation in place that may further restrict pain clinics and pill mills. Abortion clinics, social service clinics, I will say, there is a social service clinic, a medical clinic, operating out of the Star Family Center. It's operating legally, it operates under their public use permit that they have received, it's a conforming use for that particular property. The abortion clinics, I did a search, I don't believe that there are any abortion clinics, I think there was one located up there in the North Ridgewood area, but further research, I haven't been able to find anything else. But furthermore, it's been very difficult to be able to classify these and put them into a category that you may want to consider as a restriction that would be harmful to an area as North Ridgewood. If these would fall into perhaps some of the social service uses that are restricted as maybe a treatment facility, it would be prohibited, and it wouldn't need to be included in any more lists. So, that being said, we took a look at the medical office, which is a professional service, and medical office takes in a lot of different types of uses, doctor's office, dentists, and so a lot of uses that would be a benefit to the North Ridgewood area. They're classified as a professional service, they are permitted in the RP, the BP, the BR1, the BR2, the BA, and the BW. Medical office is not prohibited in any of the redevelopment areas, and based on this information, staff is recommending not to include medical office to the list of the prohibited uses in the North Ridgewood area. The next use that we looked at was salvage and recycling facilities. Stands-on-its-own is a type of use, is salvage recycling facilities. They are permitted in a North Ridgewood area in M1 only, and only as a conditional use. One of the conditions that they must abide by is no outside storage is allowed as part of the conditional use. So all of the activity has to take place within a building. Salvage recycling facilities, they are not prohibited in the redevelopment areas. This is an industrial use in an industrial zoned area, and have over here protected from intrusion. I wanted to read something for you. This is in our Land Development Code, and it, you know, when we take a look at some of the industrial uses, the industrial areas are important to the city, they always are. We have this in our Land Development Code, and it talks about industrial areas. The purpose of the industrial zoning districts is to provide appropriate areas for the location of industrial uses, and to protect these areas from the intrusion by residential or other inharmonious uses. By starting to restrict some of these allowable industrial uses, you're really going at the heart of what these zone districts are really meant for. So in doing that, we took a look at that. Staff is not recommending including salvage recycling facilities to the list of the prohibited uses in the North Ridgewood area. Commercial storage facilities, outside storage, and then also auto storage was included in that also. Commercial storage is categorized as a warehouse use. Within warehouse use, there is no outside storage permitted. You cannot have outside storage with a warehouse use. Auto storage also falls under the category there of the commercial storage facility. Both of these uses are permitted in the BW and the M1 zoning district. And again, these are industrial uses, located in industrial areas, and operating as industrial uses. These uses are not permitted in any redevelopment area, so we don't have a correlation between a use being prohibited in the redevelopment area to be able to move into the North Ridgewood area. So staff is recommending not including these uses in a list of prohibited uses in the NRA, North Ridgewood area. One thing I wanted to take a look at, because it seemed to keep coming up, was outside storage. First off, outside storage is not a permitted use in the North Ridgewood area. There is no use, there is no zoning that would allow an outside storage as a permitted use in the North Ridgewood area. This is, however, outside storage was prohibited in the South Atlantic, the midtown, and the Main Street redevelopment areas. Again, in keeping with, taking a look at some of the restrictions that were put in the redevelopment areas, and carrying them forward to perhaps protect the North Ridgewood area. Staff is recommending to include outdoor storage to the list of prohibited uses in the North Ridgewood area, but with one caveat, this would only be included for properties fronting Ridgewood Avenue. There would be no mistake about any of the properties, the industrial properties, what they can and couldn't do. They'd be able to operate as they were in the past, and the outside storage would just be prohibited on the North Ridgewood area. That being said, staff does recommend approval of the text amendment proposed. The text amendment request is tentatively scheduled for the April 4, 2012 City Commission meeting, that will be a public hearing for the first reading, and then the April 18, 2012, second reading, which is also a public hearing at the City Commission. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board is required to recommend approval to the City Commission. That concludes staff report.
Or do you have any questions to staff?
One, I don't understand that one sentence there under number five, which is all go outdoor, storage uses are not permitted in any of the zoning districts. Actually, staff is recommending prohibiting it in properties forwarding Ridgewood Avenue. It sounds to me like you said it's not allowed anyway.
It's a redundancy. And it was some of the things that we've done in the North Ridgewood area. We've put uses that were on a prohibited list that weren't gonna be permitted there anyway because the underlying zoning wouldn't have permitted it. You know, that was what we did with the North Ridgewood area. In keeping with what we did in the redevelopment areas, some of the redevelopment areas have prohibited outdoor storage, even if the underlying zoning doesn't permit it. It's the extra security, I guess, to say it's prohibited, don't even think about it. And it is for the Ridgewood corridor, you know, an area that we're looking at, we don't want any mistake, we don't want anybody to misunderstand, this is an area that we're gonna be concentrating here on the Ridgewood corridor, and if you thought perhaps outdoor storage was a possibility, it is not.
Just wanted to reinforce, I guess.
I guess the only other thing I had, I really have a problem with the pain clinics, why we don't list that as something not allowed in those areas. And they are such a, I'm talking pain clinics and pill mills. They're such a huge problem, not just here, but in all of Florida and all of the United States, and it just seems to me that this is one thing we can keep out of that area that would help them immensely. Those things are horrible, and I just can't see why we just don't say, no, you can't do it. Now, if the state comes back and says we can't do that, or they have another rule, then we'll change it back. But in the meantime, you know, I don't know why we let...
Well, I think the state is, the state is, they've really, I'll give them a little bit of credit here, they've really been doing a good job of...
Yes, they have.
Of starting to monitor the, some of these clinics and reducing the amount of pills that are coming out of there. And I think it's kind of, it's moving in the right direction, and that's really what we're seeing. And again, there's additional things that are coming in from the state that may continue that trend. So I think if we, adding pill mills might be a little premature at this point, if it might not be a requirement or a need for us to do it.
Well, I don't know why we should subject those people who live in there to that, when it's not necessary to.
Well, currently, do we have a way to even define a pill, I mean, it's a medical office. What may be happening illegally is one thing, but I don't think we have a legal way to define that difference.
Right, there are legitimate medical practices that deal with pain management, but from our discussion with the city attorney, that the legislation that went into effect July of this past 2011 has been very effective, and these places are getting shut down. So, that's our belief, that the legislation has been effective, and we're not going to see the problems that we've seen in other communities.
The other thing that Dennis didn't hit on, that we probably need to make sure we remember as well, is we are undergoing a revamp of our entire land development regulation, so we'll have opportunity to address that before that's finalized. And the other item going on is the study that the Transportation Planning Organization is paying for at this point, a US1 corridor study. They're just about ready to finish up their Phase 1 portion of that, final report I would expect out within the next couple of weeks. They are also now, within, I was told, two weeks from now, send out an RFP to move forward with Phase 2. Phase 1, what it basically did was collect all the reports that have been done over the years along US1 from the north of Ormond all the way down to the south end of the county. They've identified what the reports were, what they said, mapped them, they've got a lot of information on that. But having said that, most of those are traffic-related or movement of vehicles. Some of them are interchange improvements, mask arms, that kind of stuff. Phase 2 is going to get into land use. The redevelopment agencies up and down US1 suggested that from the beginning. They wanted to kind of evaluate all the studies that have been done first before they do that, so that's what Phase 1 is. But they're gonna be issuing an RFP, we're part of that process, we're actually will be commenting on the RFP even before it goes out. But talking with the other planning directors around us, we've been very active in our desire to look at land uses, look at aesthetics, look at more than what Phase 1 has done, and that's gonna be starting hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
And that would have a direct effect upon any land use that we would, they would be telling us.
And not just Daytona Beach, all the hills, Ormond Beach, all the communities up and down US1 are very interested in doing that.
So your grandfather ran in the existing businesses that are here?
Not necessarily. I mean, when that comes forward, we'll see how we need to adjust at that point, but right now, that's to be determined.
Back to the medical office, I understand what you're saying, you don't want to eliminate something that may be wanted and needed in that area. I also understand about the pain clinics and what you're saying, but what about being able to do something with abortion clinics and social service clinics? Why can't we, is there any way of specifying that so that, or they don't come to you in that manner, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's basically a terminology issue. You would typically call those medical offices. And so, under the medical office umbrella, there are things... And so, under the medical office umbrella, there are things North Ridgewood would benefit from. Additionally, like beyond that, the social service office, is that what it's called?
The clinic.
Clinic.
Um, we, we kind of fall into the same problem we did when we tried to prohibit social services. How do you define it? So, and that's why in the previous amendment, we went through and tried to pick out those specific uses that would address the social services. So that's been covered by the first amendment. We did prohibiting those uses in the North Ridgewood overlay. So, so then you're left with just medical office.
Any other questions, staff? We have, uh, one speaker, Sheila McAvon.
Sheila McAvon, 510 South Peninsula Drive. I'm here to speak to this tonight because I want to remind you that the reason that this ordinance was originally put into effect was to increase economic development in this particular area. As I look at these five things that have been, you know, we say now are okay, I don't see that they, uh, are going to be helpful in advancing economic development. That's what one of the problem was. I was the person who started this whole discussion about the Ridgewood corridor about five years ago. And, uh, Bill France got word of it and came to talk to me and agreed with me 100%. We must do something about the Ridgewood corridor. So when I was thinking about that, it was a very narrow area, but now I see that it's morphed into a larger area. I don't have a problem with that particularly because I understood the logic behind that because they didn't want those little pockets where people would fill in. But that same logic is disavowed with some of the things that you're going to do with this if you pass this tonight. One of the things that I think you haven't taken into consideration, and even as I was listening to Dennis talk tonight, you're treating this whole area as if it's agreeable, as if it's one area, similar area, and it is not. There are three, that I see three, maybe even four distinct areas in that, from Beach Street over to Ridgewood, that's basically residential. Then you have the Ridgewood corridor itself, which is what is of prime concern. And then you have the area from Ridgewood over to the railroad tracks, and I'm not sure why it ever extended past the railroad tracks. I don't know, but that's a little bit more residential over there. So what happens is when you apply some of these rules and you say, well, you know, we just don't want to have that, you don't want to have, uh, social, oh, I don't want to pick on that right away, bail bonds, um, then, well, great, I mean, you're allowing that to happen, well, let's go down one at a time. I mean, some things that you would allow in certain areas, as I guess mostly what I heard Dennis talking about were certain industrial areas or certain industrial uses that, yes, you don't want to exclude when you're right next to a railroad track. I appreciate that very much, but on the other hand, we don't want those same uses to be located between Beach Street and Ridgewood, which would be the eastern section of that. The bail bonds, however, I don't have any idea why you would even want to include that anywhere. That, I think, should be excluded out of there. I don't think, and when I read the backup, it said that it, staff said, if the, this planning board approves taking bail bonds, making that a, uh, non-permitted use, they would have to research the ad, to see whether there were adverse effects to the neighborhood and the city. Well, I tell you, I'm very confused by that because I don't believe that anybody in their right mind drives down any street anywhere and starts seeing bail bond offices and doesn't say to themselves, wow, what kind of an area is this? So I really would highly recommend that bail bonds come out completely. I, um, I agree with the medical office, the medical office is very good, but the social service clinics, that terminology, you know, because we don't, Carrie, because we don't have a definition of it, doesn't mean we should leave it in. You know, that's a problem. Social service clinics are what we have on North Street. Do we want more of those to come into that area? I'm just not really sure that you do. And, uh, it is a very kind of, I, that was the first question I asked, what is the definition of a social service clinic? And I think it definitely needs some kind of definition because, uh, that's different than just a plain medical office in many cases. The storage in the warehouse, um, you could, yes, I see where you could have a warehouse next to the railroad tracks, but you certainly don't want it in a residential area at all. I think that one of, when I talked to some staff earlier, what they said was, uh, and I believe Dennis may have also reiterated that, that storage cannot be, I think, I don't have my notes in front of you, but, uh, storage can, uh, is already, uh, outside storage is already prohibited in all of the NRA. Am I correct on that, Richard?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, but, here's the key, and Dennis said it to, at the very beginning and in this, uh, conversation. He presented to you that the key to these prohibitions in this area is that there's no exceptions, no PUDs can come, nobody can come with a special use permit, and that is what is so key. It is, there are no protections for the residential area if it doesn't have that, this non-permitted. You could say, well, the regulations that occur in a residential area will keep that from happening, but they don't have the backup that they have if you put it into non-permitted uses. Do you see what, I hope you understand what I'm saying, that that is an important, Dennis said it was very important and I believe 100% that it is absolutely, because we know in the South Atlantic area where we have a strictly residential R1 district, we got a 17, a 17-unit apartment put smack in the middle of our residential area when we did not want that. And so, um, P, that's because they got a PUD. So PUDs can change everything, but because you have the restriction in here that that can't happen, these things all need to be listed as non-permitted. And I believe in, you might make, as I said, the exception of the storage on, uh, or excuse me, the warehouse and the salvage on the, um, along the railroad, you know, on the western side. One other point is that, you know, it's interesting because salvage, um, you could have a classic salvage, again, I think more definition and more thought needs to go into this. A, uh, I'm not sure of the terminology, but I think like a classic salvage place is where they sell, um, stuff to do, old houses, you know, like old doors and kind of historic pieces and so forth like that. That might not be, that was mentioned to me in some conversation I have with the neighbors, that they would not be unhappy about that. So, so I don't know. Um, I would like to see all these taken out. I certainly think more work needs to be put on definitions. I would kind of like to, um, suggest that you postpone the vote on this until next, uh, the next meeting, not forever and ever, but for one more meeting, just so that some of these definitions could be, um, could be looked at, unless you are willing to go along with what I think about how we should make these, excuse me, how we should make these changes tonight. But I, I really want to see that, I want you to see two important things. One is that there are three distinct areas, at least three distinct areas, and when you make a rule for one rule to cover all, it's very difficult. And, uh, the other one is that we wanted to do this for economic development and none of these things should be at least on the Ridgewood corridor because they all will affect re, you know, economic development there. Uh, we want to bring businesses and things like that. So, thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Board, ready for your comments?
Well, I would point out, this is not a redevelopment area. And there's been no blight study and you cannot pick and choose because you don't like a business or you don't think a business is going to help economically. There's not a leg to stand on in terms of that. And let's just use bail bonds. They're actually not prohibited anywhere in the city. It's, it is an okay business use in the city wherever the zoning permits that kind of business use. Speaking to the bail bondsman that is right across from the courthouse, which is several blocks, uh, south of where this even is, Mr. Frank has been a longstanding and, um, very involved citizen in this community for years and years and years. And I, I don't know how bail bonds even get lumped into this. They're by the jail where they're needed and by, they're by the courthouse where they're needed, unless the courthouse is picking up and moving into the North Ridgewood area. I don't see that being a problem. But be that as it may, I, I do think we have to remember this is not a redevelopment area. So certainly the case was made for the social services. There was information and analysis for a few years that upheld that, but I, I really think the city would be on shaky legal ground to just pick and choose because someone doesn't like or doesn't think without any basis or analysis or fact to support it, that we pick these. And I, I for one, I think the staff did a great job in this analysis. Um, and that's what the commission asked for. Just look back at this, discuss it, see what works and go from there. So, I mean, I plan on supporting the text amendment ads that was written here.
Yes, it does. Oh, I thought you had a comment. Anyone else? Ready for a motion?
All right. Motion to approve land development code text amendment prohibited commercial uses in the North Ridgewood area, DEB 2012 dash 009.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Pass it.
Motion has been denied.
And they, yes, last item?
Item number nine, land development code text amendment, regulations exempt site restoration fencing requirements, DEB 2011 dash 108.
May we hear from Mr. Berger?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I know it's late. I'll keep, uh, my remarks brief because, uh, number one, you just got your packet, I believe, this evening? And I, I apologize that this report was not ready to go out in the packet in time. With your permission, I'd just like to go over a few points and introduce you to this. There's no hurry to act on anything this evening and I doubt you would anyway. So what I would do is just point out that, um, this is all about hurricanes, buildings that had to be knocked down and, and the reaction that we had from 2004 to 2007, the, the sand blowing, what we were looking at and in an 07, uh, we, we put an ordinance in effect. You've had a discussion back in, uh, December, so did the Main Street Redevelopment Board, uh, about some of the issues of, of fencing along South, the Atlantic Avenue corridor. Couple of facts I thought I'd share with you very quickly. Roughly about 4.66 miles, uh, is this, is the length of Atlantic Avenue. About 1.65, uh, miles of that is in the redevelopment areas, about 35%. So just, just give you a sense of, from a redevelopment standpoint, we're not dealing with a, with the whole issue. And, and to break it down into these vacant lots that were, were requiring fencing, uh, right now, today, there are 19 vacant lots. That is, whether they're contiguous or together and assembled lots, there are 19, uh, lots that we have to deal with that are east of A1A. Nine of those are in the CRA, 10 are of the remainder in the, in the rest of the city. And, uh, so we need to just kind of keep those numbers in mind and also, uh, let you know that about little over a mile in length, um, of that area that we have on Atlantic Avenue are these vacant lots. So the linear feet, uh, is 5,785 feet, give or take a few. And that's 23% of that entire length is that, those vacant lots. That's a lot of, of area. But that, though, that gives you more of a quantitative idea what we're, what we're dealing with. It's a code enforcement issue. Um, I think from their perspective, it might be called a nightmare right now because it's been very hard for them to deal with some of the absentee, uh, ownership and, uh, despite that, we've, we've got to redouble our efforts. Well, as we're doing that, um, we're looking at, at also in this report asking that we, uh, at least the Main Street Board is asking for you to look at this because they've, they, they did, uh, last month, February 8th, that's this, that's this month. Okay. Not that long ago. And they have, have, uh, recommended unanimously, uh, to go forward and, and really make two points. One is to have a consistent look to the fences, that there be quality in, in the fences that are constructed. That's really a reaction to what we've got out there now. You've got unpainted fences knocked down, uh, falling down, and, uh, and so in the future, I'd like to, to try to strengthen that part and create some consistency of a look. Uh, the other item is we'd like to have, uh, option, uh, to remove fences. That's a significant change or departure from what we have today. And that is to say that rather than have the fences up, if the owner wanted to, in the, in the proposed language that, that we have in your packet, it's to take the fences down. Because if, and, and the way to do that is to make sure that you've revegetated lots. Because let's go back to the sand. Why were the fences put up in the first place? To stop sand. The sand is blowing over those fences, uh, in a good wind, and if you've peered behind those four-foot fences, what do you see? Not a pile of sand. The wind blows it up, it doesn't have a chance because that wind is hitting the side, it blows up in the air and that gets pushed across anyway. It just doesn't, you don't see it snaking across A1A, but it's going somewhere. So, uh, my point is, is that this, that when they recommend in a lot of research we've done, sand fences, they are talking about closer to the beach and maybe you can have some effect there, but you usually have to have a series of fences and do other things if you want to restore a sand dune or keep the sand in place. Otherwise, it keeps moving, um, where it wants to go. So, the question is, what can we do to deal with what's really the concern and the problem? And that's the sand that's in the, the vacant lot itself. And I, and the more that we can start to deal with trying to get those and encourage those lots to be, uh, revegetated, the, the better off I think we'll all be. We didn't expect that all these lots would sit here by now. The economy kind of helped do that. And there's not a real guarantee we're going to change things very quickly. So what's suggested here is that we just, um, try to put something in place that will give us some time, maybe open up some of these vistas or at least get the fences back and look consistent. So we have two ways to go. Now, in your packet, we've offered up three different, uh, ways to, to look at revegetating or stabilizing that sand area, sand surface in those vacant lots. I don't think we've come to a solid conclusion on that. It's something to think about and we'd like to have that opportunity to come back next time after we've done some additional research and know exactly how we want to approach the, the mechanics of, how, how do you do that? How do we enforce this? How do we make this happen so, so that, um, we get the kind of result we're looking for? So that, that's pretty much my brief overview. Again, I apologize that, that, of the lateness of getting this information to you, but I see no reason to, you know, dwell too long on this tonight unless you have any questions and we'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Berger?
We'll hear from him next time, won't we?
You'd like to request a continuance?
A continuance?
Yes, I'd like to request a continuance, please.
And would this go back to the re, because there's actually been substantial text changes. Would this go back to the redevelopment board?
Well, I, I thought we would, we would do that also and come back to the board. There's no real, uh, change in the intent of what the board wanted because the board felt very strongly, and the Main Street, uh, staff report is in here in your packet.
I think there is in one area-
Okay.
-which is worth discussing at the redevelopment board-
Okay.
-in terms of the construction of the fence.
Construction of the fence.
Totally gone.
Yeah, we really struggled with that one. So, yeah, well, there's a, there's, well, I'll just, can I make a brief comment on that? That there's a section already in the, the current ordinance that talks about it, but again, I think the, I think the question is, could we beef up the, the detail of how strong a fence is? Can we put something in, you know, what kind of screws we use, uh, the, the hardware to put it together? And we're just struggling with how to, uh, address that in there more so than what it already says you should do with a fence. So we'll, we'll have, we can have that discussion at the Main Street Board again because we'll have time before your next meeting.
And, and I would suggest for the- And, and I would suggest for the Main Street Board, it might be helpful if the planning board looked at page two of this staff report. The two, the staff where it's in yellow, staff has provided three options that the planning board may wish to consider. I know we just got this tonight, but two of those options mean every time there's an appeal, it's coming here. Does this board want to hear every appeal on whether or not a fence goes down? That's option two and option three.
The thought behind that is, if there's only 19 properties and only nine of them are in the Main Street, we couldn't really say to the Redevelopment Board, and the standards we've been looking at so far weren't necessarily concrete. So, for staff to deny, there's no avenue of relief for them. Right. So, that's to give a property owner the ability to challenge, you know, if we're trying to apply some standard that's not necessarily black and white.
Well, couldn't they go to the special magistrate for an appeal? Because it's a code thing, right? If it doesn't meet, that's.
Possibly, yeah. It's an option.
Yeah. I just, I mean, if y'all have any input on it, just thinking off the top of your head tonight. Do you want to hear about fences as much as you want to hear about signs?
No, I don't think so.
Does that maybe put it in perspective?
Are you, how many properties were there, 18?
Yeah, 18, 19 properties.
Nine in the redevelopment, 19 overall in the rest of the city.
Do you want a 30-day?
30 days, yeah. 30 days is all we need.
You ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we continue DEV 2011-108 until the next board meeting, which is?
March the?
Sorry, March?
Twenty?
Quick, guys.
Twenty-fifth, probably. Twenty-second?
Yeah, but early Thursday. Twenty-second? Sorry, 22nd?
Yes.
Okay, 22nd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Reed.
I'm sorry?
Ready for other business? Downtown Blue Road Redevelopment, Ms. Washington isn't here. Midtown Redevelopment Area, Ms. Benjamin?
Oh. Midtown Redevelopment Board met Tuesday, February 14th at 6:00 at the City Hall, Commission's All staff reports was given, court enforcement gave an update. They had a speaker from work, Public Works Department, and he gave an update on Orange Avenue. And the biggest thing is they need money to fix Orange Avenue, so. And the action item, DEV 2012-005, site plan approved, and it was the Crystal Car Wash at 127 South Nova Road. They wanted some modifications. It was closed and reopened. And that caused a big discussion, but it'll be brought back to the board because of the prohibit with the car washes, so you'll hear that again. And the other thing was the conceptual site plan, DEV 2011-093, which used to be Hal, Village at Halifax. It's a new name, it's going to be, and it used to be Halifax Village. They came in and they gave their site plan, and it discussed it, and it went on for a long time. But the main thing was that they was pushing it, they trying to push it, though, because if they don't get it in a certain time, they lose to find the federal dollars. So, it'll be back up. I think they're going to the Commission. And Mr. Bright gave us a redevelopment project update, and everything went well.
Good, good. Ms. Remark, South Atlantic?
Met Wednesday, February 8th. The board approved a change to fix awnings on an A1A business, recommended text changes to parking requirements, and RDB 5 recommended those text changes to the planning board, so I'm sure that will be coming forward to aid existing buildings that are having rental problems because of the parking requirements in that zoning. Heard about the fencing, we talked about that, and we started the first phase of a discussion on itinerant vending in the Main Street redevelopment area and how and what may need to be addressed in concert with the goals of the E-zone.
That would have been interesting.
And no one came to blows.
Thank you. And being as we have no public, I guess there's no public comments. We have staff comments.
One thing I want to point out, if this last item is going back to that Main Street Board, we're going to have the same problem we had this month in that if they make changes, getting their changes finished, getting their minutes, and getting that into the, your package with your normal delivery time won't happen.
Would you like a reconsideration of the continuance?
Well, I don't have a problem with getting you what we can or getting it after the other package goes out, but I don't believe you're going to have it in the package a week in advance when we try to get the package to you.
Well, that's kind of foolish then for us to do that. I mean, why don't we just make it 60 days, and then you've got plenty of time to work it out? Is that all right if we did that?
Well, it was passed unanimously, so a motion to reconsider?
Um, we could do it that way. The only thing I was going to point out, this was a special, why it happened this way this time was because after it left Main Street, then staff finally got a chance to review it. So, that's, that's where the wrinkle was. This time, staff will have reviewed it before it goes to Main Street. So, you could, you know, choose to reconsider or just leave it at 30 days. I don't anticipate it would be a problem, but, okay.
I mean, we could try to get it here in 30 days, and if, at that time, if it's not ready or you don't get it in time.
We'll just continue it again.
Continue it, that'll do. I just wanted to give you a warning.
Board comments?
Staff, yeah. Staff comments, that was it. Board comments?
Oh, I forgot to say.
Tracy?
No, go ahead. I'm listening.
I forgot to say that Midtown Master Plan was presented to the Commission.
I was going to ask that, I thought.
It was in the paper.
It was in the paper, yes. Well, that's very good.
Yeah. Two things. Could we, since it's seen all these red quasi-judicial hearings, I think it might be helpful to either have a legal memo or even a staff discussion or presentation on what, when, this is very different from the Code Board, which is quasi-judicial. At the Code Board, when we had it, we actually even had to have a separate board attorney from this, oh, you have something?
Yes.
Oh, that's great. And we couldn't talk to staff, and there was a lot of, okay.
We have a process in place for quasi-judicial decisions of land use matters. We've been conducting them in that manner all along.
Okay.
It's, it's not, but we don't swear people in here unless someone asks for it, and you can see.
And ex parte was another question I had.
And that's contained in the same ordinance, so.
Wonderful.
It was just a request by a commissioner to have it noted on the agenda, but it does not change anything we have been doing. We have been conducting them, and you can just see on this handout, it's a sub B. It talks about the quasi-judicial proceeding, and then the ex parte is in sub C.
Okay, great, thank you. That's wonderful. And I won't be at the March meeting, I will be out of town.
One thing. You know, we saw that same thing in the paper this week, which was actually Midtown, and, you know, we've done this once before. Remember, the University of Florida helped us on something some time ago, and here we used, here we have Florida A&amp;M. And really, it seems such a waste for me not to be using facilities like this because it seems to be a win-win. Because they get experience in something that they're going to be doing later on, and at the same time, we get, we get a lot of information from them for a lot less than we pay at some other places where we've done surveys for as long as I've been on this board, and that's 82 years. And, and so it's, I, I mean, it's been a, you know, it's, it's something we really should be taking advantage of. And I think it was a terrific job they did. I just was very impressed. Even the commission was impressed. Even the commission, so you know it's, but, even.
Well, I told Carrie, with the quasi-judicial, I thought I was going to have to open the meetings with the hear you, hear you, hear you, you know, the Honorable Planning Board of the City of Daytona Beach. Right. And all the, all the audience stand when you walk out. Meeting adjourned.